I'd like to call the meeting back to order and we are moving to number 11. The removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wang. And I do believe Madam City Clerk has a very brief report, please.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. Just briefly, the staff is bringing this item back because Council requested on two Council members on February 21st requested that this item come up for discussion regarding the removal of Planning Commissioner Council member Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner R. Wang. Commission Member Wang is currently serving a full term on the Planning Commission which expires on January 30th, 2025.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I understand this item has a lot of passionate input and we have received, I lost count, if not hundreds of emails and input, so I want to appreciate everyone's taking the time to email the Council. And we are going to open to public comment, but first I want to ask my Council members, do you have any questions? Or shall we order the com- open the public comment first and then we can comment?
Yeah, just one quick question in advance for the the city attorney. In a matter like this, there was a member of the public earlier who had raised the question of a quasi judicial proceeding requiring a neutral decision maker. Is this a quasi judicial proceeding?
No, it's not. All Commissioners serve at the pleasure of the Council.
So any Council member therefore would be able to make up their mind in advance of this proceeding?
That's correct.
Thank you for the clarification. So as you can see, we have received a lot of comments input and I, on behalf of the Council, would like to thank every one of you who sent the comments. We have a lot of cards and people on Zoom, so I'd like to request everyone who wants to speak turning the cards as soon as possible instead of nine minutes so we can kind of see how many people are going to make comments. And also on the Zoom, would you raise your hand if you want to speak so Madam City Clerk can give me a clear number of how many people are speaking?
So I can tell you right now, Mayor, we have 33 speaker cards in-house and we have at least 20 hands raised on Zoom.
So we're looking at about 58 to 60 speakers?
Yes, we're probably at about 60 speakers right now.
60 speakers. So I would like to, we used to have three minutes each, so we'd like to shorten up a little bit so that we can, you know, everybody can have a chance to speak instead of just one or two, you know, we wanted everybody to speak. And if you are speaking, like somebody that has the same concepts and statement, maybe you can shorten up a little bit so everybody have a chance to listen to everyone. So I would like to shorten it to one and a half minutes for each one of you. If you only take one minute, that would be greatly appreciated. So I'm going to move it to one and a half minutes for each speaker. And we're going to start with the person in the room, please.
Okay, so we're going to start with, I'm sorry.
Sueda Mayor, I don't know if Commissioner R. Wang is also in the Zoom attendees. If so, would you consider allowing him to speak first in a possibly a longer period of time?
Absolutely, yes. Is he there?
Yes, he is logged in.
Can you ask, how do we communicate with him?
I can allow him to speak. I won't allow him to speak.
Yes, we will let him speak and he can have the full three minutes.
Okay. Welcome, R.
Hello there. May I actually have someone else yield some additional time for me as well? And the clock is set here at 1:26 right now.
Yes, we'll adjust that.
And can I yield additional time? I just need five minutes.
Let's, so the Mayor, you have the authority to give him five minutes, right?
Okay, I think I will give Commissioner Wang five minutes as he requested.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Council, residents of Cupertino and guests. It's heartwarming to see a number of friendly faces, dissenting views, and interested citizens here. Let's be honest, today's decision is really the city councils to make. I do serve at the pleasure of the Council, but keep in mind, we ultimately serve at the pleasure of our residents and voters. For those in power, when we forget that we work for all of our residents in an inclusive manner, we commit hubris. I fundamentally know we are all better than that. But before we begin, I want to thank the thousands of supporters who believe in residents' rights and community first. More than 200 people sent over a thousand letters to the city. Our opposition barely sent 91 letters, and many of those letters were not even from Cupertino residents. Some of those are from high school students that lived here, are now in college, that are writing back, which is fine. Their input is important to me as well, but just to understand the context, your support means the world to me. And rest assured, regardless of the decisions, we all need to remain vigilant or we will lose the democracy we cherish and the quality of life we worked hard for. We need to put an end to the vindictive politics of J.R. Fruen and his crowd. Let's start there. Mr. Fruen's carefully orchestrated attacks on me and organized defamation through the nonprofit he created, Cupertino For All, is a gross violation of the ethics code and handbook he signed. Just because he's not on the organization's website doesn't mean he's not there. He's still listed as a Director or the Secretary of State. He's actively working with his groups to coordinate attacks and work with the numerous organizations outside of Cupertino who do not share our residents' interests in sensible growth. He even sent an email to his supporters with the same talking points as Cupertino For All. In fact, this small but very vocal and very important group have deliberately distorted facts in a timely, veiled, in a thinly veiled attack on democracy and due process in Cupertino and also in other unsuspecting cities. Many of these organizations have a network paid for by developer interests and lobbyists fighting against your best interests as residents. Despite his harmful actions, I'm morally willing to give the benefit of doubt for the many that are here today and that have been misled by Mr. Fruen and his small band of activists. Some of the high school students here, thank you for your specific participation and more importantly, for coming out here today. Sometimes you get caught up in the heat of the moment and you forget to do some due diligence. Sometimes you don't have time to get all the facts and hear the other side. That's an important part of democracy. There's really no need to continue this type of division in the city. We are all better than that. As you've heard from the countless letters and conversations from thousands of supporters, the case made before you is false. The allegations made on sexual harassment are not true. A legal opinion of the case shows that despite Ms. Faust's failed attempt at double jeopardy on a case that was sealed 20 years ago per her agreement, she was not the victim of sexual harassment. She was the victim of a developer interest who hacked my network to sign her up onto porn sites. Their attempt to frame me for the standing up, for standing up injured me personally and financially. I even lost my job, but I would stand up for my residents again as I am today. Rewriting history like this is a form of defamation. More importantly, the allegations on criticizing staff in this case are justified. I do believe our staff does amazing work, but when we actually have consultants that are ultimately let go for poor performance, as was mentioned earlier today, the questions about her former Assistant City Manager's behaviors were proven accurate when she left, and she does have a history for poorly treating both residents and staff, and those are all documented. And our residents also have every right to have their issue of 5G towers on our agendas and they should be heard from, the staff. If our job as a Commissioner is not to provide oversight, then what is it? Certainly not rubber stamp bad decisions. No, our job as Commissioners is to provide oversight, guidance, and input. Sometimes we have to point out when things are upside down or not correct. Otherwise, why have commissions? Some planning commissions in the past have rubber stamped decisions that could have massive health impacts on today's residents and the future residents such as those in Valco. Did you know that land is contaminated and listed as a geotracker site? The developer cannot build unless they clean up the site or rewrite legislation in Sacramento to make an exception, which they are trying desperately to do. If that was under our planning commissions and our guidance, we would never let that happen. In fact, we did not let that happen with a pro-resident and community interested council. The bottom line, none of the allegations thrown at me have merit and more importantly, none of the majority council made an effort to reach out to me to hear my side. Let that sink in for a second. None. The Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and Fruen never once asked me about these allegations. They never once sought out the truth or to learn about my side of the story. This is their first instance of hearing the side of the story, and I truly hope they take this to heart. Part of the democratic process is forgiveness, especially when the facts dispel misinformation and lies told at the heat of the moment. This is why we have due process in many areas, and for those experienced council members, one often waits to hear the facts before making a decision, unless motivated by political means. In my case, it should be apparent that the allegations raised by J.R. and his Cupertino For All nonprofit and the outside housing activist groups are patently false and politically motivated. They don't want any resident-focused leaders that emerge and fight back for resident rights. They want you to back down and not fight back. I want you to take this as a moment in history when many of us rise up and put an end to this vindictive behavior filled with Sal Lewinsky tactics of vilification, shaming, bullying, and threats for removal. Those actions are not what a democracy should tolerate. That's Marxism. So I ask the Council, if you choose to remove me purely on political reasons, at least be transparent to the public. That is your intention. That's fine. That is your prerogative. Be clear it is purely political, but do not hide under false charges or fake charges.
Thank you, R. That is your time.
Can someone yield me more time?
Mayor, we have 63.
Yes, please proceed with public comments, please.
We have 60, looks like 64 speaker cards. First, we have, I'm sorry, I can't read, but the last name is Balak, followed by Xin Pei Lu, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Yeah, if you could come up and line up where your name is mentioned so we can go a little bit faster, that would be highly appreciated. Thank you so much. And I really want to thank Advance for everyone's coming here to talk either in person or via Zoom.
Hello, my name is Gazan Baloch and I'm a sophomore at Cupertino High School. I believe that R. Ray Wang is unfit for office due to repeated occurrences of bullying, spreading lies, as well as mistreatment of fellow staff members. The Cupertino City Council should act in the interest of us Cupertino residents and remove Mr. Wang from office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Xin Pei Lu, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome.
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to quote R. Wang for a second from the Q and A, from the Q and A. So, as he said, "Any competent high school student, the average high school student in this district could have done a better job than individuals that's paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to do a job." Our Cupertino students are so freaking smart, they could have done this job better, cheaper, and we could have given them an internship out of it. So they could have used that for applying to colleges. You know, so as a competent high school student and an intelligent high school student, he is very much capable, my public opinion needs to be taken seriously and needs to be taken note by everyone. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Xin Pei. I'm currently a high school student attending Cupertino High School as a resident of Cupertino. I have come here tonight to support the removal of R. Wang from role of Planning Commissioner and to convince the Council to do the right thing and take action. I'm doing this out of my own accord. I also want to make it clear that this is not about politics. This is about person and position of power that represents Cupertino repeatedly displaying concerning patterns in the past and now. He has sexually harassed a City Council member he disagreed with, antagonized community members who had disagreed with him, mistreated staff and team members, violated Commissioner handbook multiple times, and spread lies to fear mongers to sway members of public to his side. These are truly concerning. He has shown that he's not fit to be a leader. He's not afraid to use any tactics to shut down any opposed voices and has shown an inability to cooperate and least, and listen as a leader should. I'm here tonight because I believe Cupertino and its future. It's long been overdue to hold R. Wang accountable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is your time.
We need decency in leadership now. Do the right thing.
Jennifer, welcome Jennifer. Next, after Jennifer, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Emma Sharon.
Thank you. I am a graduate of Homestead High School, as was Steve Jobs. I'm very, very concerned about this attempt to remove, and I'm going to call him Mr. Wang. No one has had the courtesy to call him that. He is a Planning Commissioner in the city of Cupertino. I have known Mr. Wang for many, many years, and I will tell you right now, if we were fighting, yeah, you can laugh, but I will tell you right now, if we were going out and fighting the British in the Revolutionary War, he would be one of the generals. Yeah, you can laugh, okay, fine. You don't, you disrespect the people who founded this country? Okay, let's, let's talk about this. There are things that have happened in this state in the last four years. I could not understand them. I have gone back to look at what my family did when they were in a crisis 250, 300 years ago, and this is where we are. Mr. Ray R. is a very, very smart person. He's a good thinker. He thinks out of the box. He is respectful. There has been a lot of, my mother-in-law sent me a lot of things that were on Nextdoor that had been published about him, and they're all wrong. My mother-in-law lives in West San Jose, and she's very active in politics too. I'm very, very concerned that this is a smear campaign on him, and we don't want to go down this road. Democracy rests on the need of discourse.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time.
Looking at viewpoints that are different, and you can never rest or someone will take democracy from you. And you can laugh.
Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Emma Sharon, followed by Eric Linskaug. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Council members and Mayor Way. I'm puzzled why anyone's trying to turn this agenda item into a forum on development. There's ethical and neighborly people on all sides of every issue, and we are all expected to actually act kindly, nicely towards each other, even if we don't agree. The Commissioner's handbook, however, is more stringent. It requires that you need refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, and attacks upon any other official, staff, or the public. My personal experience, not what I'm hearing online, but my personal experience with Mr. Wang has shown me that he has not meeting this standard and likely will not continue to meet this standard. Prior to being a City Commissioner, I was the brunt of personal attacks by Mr. Wang on Nextdoor on several occasions. I was also threatened with a lawsuit via a personal message, which I've mentioned to you guys at least twice before, because I mentioned a publicly available news article. Not something I made up, publicly available. Just a few days ago, I faced further intimidation as a Commissioner through an email from Mr. Wang himself entitled "With Regard to the Facts," with an attachment from his lawyer. It is well-known that Mr. Wang is a very wealthy individual and has previously sued other individuals. It was clearly a threat. For those who don't consider personal testimony believable, and I have heard a couple of you say that you don't believe people, I brought screenshots because I have proof. So these issues are not about saving Cupertino from aggressive development. They're about personal conduct, and we expect that out of all of our Commissioners. The ends don't justify the means. Please consider these things in your decision tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Emma Sharon, followed by Eric Linskaug, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Emma.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Way, members of the Council. Actually, I'm going to remove my mask for the, for the ease of the microphone. I would like to support the statements that you've just heard in terms of my personal experiences and those that I, that have been relayed to me by close friends and family in terms of the emotional damage that Commissioner Wang has done to them personally, in terms of the threats that he's made, not just those that you've heard so far, but will continue to hear across, across the evening. Even if Commissioner Wang would like to accuse me of defamation, even under the most stringent defamation laws in the world, truth is a defense to that, to that accusation, and I feel entire, even the belief thereof, and I feel entirely confident that there is sufficient proof that Commissioner Wang has perpetuated a habitual pattern of abuse against the public and staff and fellow Commissioners across a variety of commissions, and I strongly urge you to remove him from his position on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Next, we have Eric Linskaug, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Susan Moore. Is Eric Linskaug here? Okay, so we'll move on to Peggy Griffin, followed by Susan Moore, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, Council members and staff. This issue instigated by Council Member Fruen has cost the staff hours of work handling the aftermath. It's been divisive and increased the distrust within our city. A result of the recent email sent by Council Member Fruen listed several issues. It saddens me that you didn't bother to even reach out to Council Commissioner Wang to find his story. This issue was closed 20 years ago. This is not a trial, yet it's beginning to feel that way on an item that the city has no jurisdiction for. Commissioner Wang wrote a letter to the city manager expressing concern over the interaction with an employee. This seems like exactly what a Commissioner should do. Take it up with the city manager. In fact, the newly passed council procedures repeatedly mention that issues should be done that way. When resident-focused members held a 4-1 majority, they did not remove Commission members who disagree with their views midterm. Please consider the long-term impact, the relationships in this city, and precedent-setting move you are about to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Susan Moore, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Tessa Parrish. Welcome, Susan.
I'm Susan, and thank you for letting me speak. I'll just be brief. I just wanted to say I oppose the removal of Commissioner Wang from the Planning Commission. I watch the city meetings regularly and including the May 24th meeting of last year. I agree with Commissioner Wang's comments at the time of the meeting and remember thinking, boy, finally, somebody's saying something about this, these issues with the consultant. I mean, I don't think you realize that the, the context of what all this housing stuff has done to residents. First, we hear from the media, oh, Cupertino isn't doing anything for housing. Oh, there's letters to the editor, usually from people that don't even live there, about Cupertino not, not doing housing and they're not dragging their feet. And, and so here you have this consultant who's totally inadequate. One of my relatives tried to, tried to be on their committee and was accepted as one of the stakeholders. I never heard, yes, they were accepted, and never heard that they were, that they did away with that, that aspect, that planning. So many of us were trying to get on this fancy tool that they had, and I, when, when Commissioner Wang spoke and verbalized our frustrations, I felt redeemed and I felt not alone anymore and that somebody was at least doing that. So I appreciate him and I think he's a very smart individual. I think.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Tessa Parrish, followed by Long Jiao.
First off, wouldn't it be really great, would have been really great if all the people that have stepped into this building tonight had participated in the housing element? They did not. Commissioner Wang believes in the democratic process and listens to residents' concerns. I have seen him do this on neighborhood sidewalks, outside of formal city meetings, and he is always willing to meet with community members to better understand individual issues they have and are bringing to attention to the city. Often, these are the form of formal appeals to the Commission. He is thoughtful and fair in his deliberations in these circumstances. People don't always get the decisions they hope for, but they are heard by Commissioner Wang. I personally attend all but one and a half city meetings discussing the housing element, and it is something that I have paid close attention to, given the unequal impact it will have. During the May 24th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, Ray Wang echoed concerns that he had heard from the public and seen for himself. In the case of the current City Council, excuse me, housing element, the city contracted with EMC Planning Group, we all know that now, this highly-paid consultant was patently ill-equipped and doing a poor job. Our own planning department was frustrated and seemed to have their hands tied. Wang indicated there was justification for public outrage with the progress of the consultant. Our Assistant City Attorney essentially agreed that Commissioner Wang's statements were valid and did not take anything personally from Wang's comments. He actually used the phrase, "No worries."
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time. Next, we have Tessa Parrish, followed by Long Jiao, followed by Donna Austin. Welcome, Tessa.
So for the public that didn't get the letter from the attorney, the two facts are as follows, and I quote from the letter. Twenty years ago, Mr. Wang was charged with three violations of the California Penal Code in action involving the Redwood City Planning Commissioner Roseanne Faust. As clear as a court docket, Mr. Wang pled no contest to a single misdemeanor charge of annoyance telephone call place of work. He pled not guilty to the remaining charges. The docket further reflects without ambiguity that on January 13th, 2004, Mr. Wang entered a plea of no contest to the misdemeanor count and that all remaining counts or charges were dismissed without any finding of guilt. That is not what's been passed around. It's been passed around felony, failure to, I mean, it's been ridiculous. So that's one charge. That was completely lie. This is the truth. There's no, no sexual harassment. You can stop on the character charges there. For someone that just spoke, you know, and claimed that he's unfit because of comments made on Nextdoor, that's, that's not him as a Commissioner. He, when he's a Commissioner, he's respectful. He's never, ever been disrespectful to the public. Now, if you want to take Nextdoor, I can tell you about people on Nextdoor that have been disrespectful to me. The same thing, I can bring in a screenshot for someone trying to intimidate me for asking a question and someone sitting here in the, in the dais. So let's not take that and let's not try to remove someone who's very involved with the Commission with Valco coming up.
Thank you, Tessa. Next, we have Long Jiao, followed by Donna Austin, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Long.
Good evening, Council members. So I'm talking about this new City Council majority, which is made up by Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and Council Member Fruen. They're trying to take over the Planning Commission by attacking Planning Commissioner Ray Wang and attempting to remove him. If they succeed, they confuse a vacant seat with someone who shares their views. The new City Council majority has already eliminated the design and environmental review committees. And so they can take control of the Planning Commission is their next step to push forward the projects with less affordable housing and environmental oversight. Their first attempt, this is not their first attempt, their first attempt to control the Planning Commission is that to remove Commissioner Steve Sharp. But fortunately, the first attempt failed. But now, they are targeting Commissioner Ray Wang in a political attack with their allies. This attack is an attempt to control the future of Cupertino. Who will be their next target? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Austin, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Ian Greensides. Welcome, Donna.
City Council, City Manager, my name is Donna Austin, and I'm a 48-year resident of Cupertino, and I served on the Planning Commission for eight years back in the 90s. I believe that the Planning Commission is an advisory body appointed by the City Council. All Commissioners must serve in the act of public interest, but they need to serve at the pleasure of the City Council. The Planning Commission should hold themselves in the highest ethical standards, which means exercising their power and the public interest with respect while being independent, impartial, and fair in their judgment and actions. A Planning Commissioner treats staff and every resident with respect. The Planning Commission represents all residents, Yimbees and Nimbies, and those too busy to even care. Not just residents who are against most development in Cupertino. Build a wall around Cupertino and make San Jose pay for it was an amusing joke by the leader of better Cupertino and a Planning Commissioner today. But it is so true in the belief for Ray Wang and his supporters. Please remove R. Wang on the Planning Commission and replace him with a dedicated citizen that wants Cupertino to be for all.
Thank you, Donna. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Ian Greensides, followed by Stephen Sharp. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan. I'm Good evening, Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm a member of the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. My commissioner experience gives me perspective of how we are supposed to conduct ourselves. R. Wong often and shockingly disregards the commissioner's handbook and the ethics guide. It is not illegal to remove a commissioner. The council procedure manual states that the council retains full discretion to review performance and may take action as needed, including removal. I have witnessed R. Wong violating commission and ethics policies. Two weeks ago, I forwarded an email and videos to city council. Since that day, council has received letters, and then they have people speak here, asking to keep him on the commission, because otherwise, no one will be listening to the residents. How do these writers overlook the statements of how residents are not being listened to and how they're being threatened? My focus is on how R. Wong treats people who disagree with him. He threatens people in all walks of life. He threatens staff and residents who disagree with him. He is chilling discussion and reducing the range of information that each one of you will hear. I urge council to focus on how he performs his duties. Does the city want a commissioner on the planning commission who does not listen to residents and who threatens residents? Two years ago, council member Zhao forwarded an email to the Housing Commission written by Wong, and I have forwarded that. And the answer I got back from council member Moore was, oh, well, his frustration, I understand that. The frustration was because the council was actually slowing down the process of the housing element, not EMC. You're welcome. Thank you for this time.
Next we have Ian Greensides, followed by Stephen Sharp, followed by Erz Madar.
Good evening. My name's Ian Greensides. I'm a business owner here in Cupertino and until three years ago, I lived here. I've been on the Cupertino High School, School Site Council and on the FUHSD Foundation Board. And your public communications tonight are submitted copies of the criminal docket printout from R. Wong's criminal case in Redwood City and also the civil suit that Suzanne Faust filed against him, accusing him of signing her up for pornography because he disagreed with her politically. She also submitted a letter into the public record tonight. When I raised this issue publicly, R. Wong apparently took my personal email from city communications, provided it to his attorneys, who sent me a letter threatening to sue me. It was in the press. In spite of all this documentation, he still refuses to accept responsibility. You heard him speak tonight. R. Wong is divisive. R. Wong embarrasses the city. R. Wong should be removed. We need decency in our city's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you Ian. Next we have Stephen Sharp, followed by Erz Madar, followed by Neil.
Hi, Stephen Sharp, speaking for myself. I'm speaking from my lived experience as a city council member, met former mayor, planning commissioner, and now planning commission chair. Ray has served Cupertino with integrity and distinction. He has never demonstrated any unethical behavior while serving as a planning commissioner. He always listens to residents. It is true, Ray was very upset with the performance of our original housing element consultant, EMC, as was I, as was the city council, as was the city planning department. And ultimately, the new city manager was finally able to end that fiasco and as you saw tonight, hire a new consultant. It's not in the job description of city council members or commissioners to sit quietly while the city's being threatened. We are elected and appointed to advocate for the best interests of the city, and Ray has always done just that. I grew up in Florida. I've been extremely upset by the anti-democratic actions of Florida's governor, Ron DeSantis. It's very, very upsetting to me to see the same kind of behavior here in Cupertino by J.R. Fuwen. Cupertino is better than that. What we have here is a developer and a group funded by development and real estate interests that doesn't like the fact that Ray Wong advocates for ownership housing and for BMR housing and for sensible growth. Don't do this. It's uncalled for and unethical. It will reflect badly on our city and will have repercussions for the city and for the individuals and entities that are engaging in this unethical behavior. Thank you.
Thank you Stephen. Next we have Erz Madar, followed by Neil, followed by Seema Swamy. Welcome Erz.
Hello, my name's Erz. Never been here before. Super kind of interesting. Ray is my neighbor. He invited us. He has a group chat locally. I don't know him deeply, but what I do know from Ray is he's extremely intelligent. He's kind. That's how I know Ray. And he's very civic minded and he thinks big. He's really smart. You know, you don't meet smart people every day, but he's one of them. And so when I saw the newspaper articles with single source, right, I mean, journalism is no longer what it was. And especially at the mercury when it comes to development issues, it's horrific. It just shocked me and it shocked me to the point where I wanted to come here and say I've heard both sides, you know, I see the young people here, they've clearly bought into the villainization of Ray and they don't understand things because they're young. And they want, well, they want affordable housing, don't we all, right? They want a chance to live. But he's not your demon. You guys don't understand that. I mean, you're drinking some kind of Kool-Aid, you don't get the big picture. Don't do this. And I'll just say one more thing. Developers are powerful, they have a lot of money. The number one problem with city councils across the country is corruption. It is things that come in on the sides. If you weaken leadership in a city, you make room for corruption. And corruption, the level of corruption is an individual choice. It's what you choose and what to accept. Don't accept it.
Thank you Erz. Next we have Neil, followed by Seema Swamy, followed by Tim Shivley. Welcome Neil.
Hello, Mayor, members of the city council. First, I would like to address the last comment. I had a very engaging and meaningful conversation with the previous speaker in the lobby. I'm very disappointed to hear the ageist's comments about young people, that we supposedly cannot have our own independent thoughts, that we can't understand issues because of our age. I feel like I have a good grasp of what's going on right now, so I would just ask that in the future, don't make comments like that, that are very disrespectful to young people who are in the room. I submitted a sign-on letter from a number of different organizations, including Cupertino for All, Democratic Activists for Women Now, Dawn, South Bay Yimby, Silicon Valley Young Democrats, South Bay Youth Changemakers, the Silicon Valley Asian Pacific American Democratic Club, all in support of item 11, Commissioner R. Wong's removal. I would encourage you to take a look at the letter. It details much of what is being talked about today, but I also wanted to address some of the commentary made by the commissioner in the beginning of this session as well. What R. Wong is doing, and I want to make that very clear to members of the council, is called gaslighting. When you take people who have lived experiences that are telling you, this is the trauma that it caused me, they are writing into you, they don't want to do this, and then you're telling them none of this stuff happened, that is not what a leader does. A leader who's actually focused on growth and wants to prove that they are an effective leader is willing to say, I messed up, not none of this stuff happened. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Neil. Next we have Seema Swamy, followed by Tim Shivley, followed by Bill Wilson. Welcome Seema.
I'm speaking for myself, Seema Swamy. I have known Ray Wong for a few years now, and I have been incredibly impressed by his public service mindedness and the way he conducts himself, listening to opposing viewpoints deeply respectfully. Ray Wong is not just an advocate for the city, but also listens across the board to various viewpoints. He also has his own agency, the Constellation Research, is a great advocate for research, and therefore I will highlight that point again. 1,016 people, 1,016 people have opposed his removal. 91 have said yes. So I want the record to be very clear here, not just the number of people who are speaking, but those who have actually voiced and sent their statements out there. Ray Wong is out here for us, right, looking for responsible growth. And there are projects that he has spearheaded, asked the tough questions, and obviously angered the special interests and other people as well. I'm not saying that is exactly what each and everyone who has spoken here has done or that their experiences are incorrect, but I can tell you this, that Ray is open to all perspectives and it would be a great loss to our city of Cupertino to have him removed as a commissioner and sends a wrong message that you can be removed for pretty much anything if there is, there is a notion that we don't like you and where is the due diligence and where is the due process? I would like to have that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you Seema. Next we have Tim Shivley, followed by Bill Wilson, followed by Richard Mellinger. Welcome Tim.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Shively. I'm an English instructor at Dehansa College and also president of the Foothill Dehansa Community Colleges Faculty Association. And council members, I know how you're feeling tonight weighing such a momentous decision because our board of trustees went through a similar decision about a year and a half ago in regards to one of our college presidents. This president had created such a toxic working environment, this went on for years and nearly all the employees were worn out and dispirited, morale was at an all-time low. Those who could left. And that is precisely when a governing body must intervene, when things have become so noxious as to be dysfunctional. Our board did the right thing and stepped up to support the academic senate's vote of no confidence and not to renew the president's contract. But she did not go quietly. She applied every bit of political pressure she could, including listing the support of external groups, but the board stuck to their guns and refused to reinstate her. The healing process takes time, but we have a new president starting in April and the college was recently voted number one community college in the nation. You face a similar decision tonight, a similar opportunity to take Cupertino and move it in a new direction, and I hope you make the right choice by removing Mr. Wong. Thank you.
Thank you Tim. Next we have Bill Wilson, followed by Richard Mellinger, followed by Dolly Sandoval.
Thank you, Mayor Wei and council members. I'm very glad to see that the city council is finally taking up the issue of Commissioner Ray Wong. His position on policies will make some residents happy and others unhappy, but his behavior is an embarrassment to all Cupertino residents. Let's be clear, I'm not talking about fiercely advocating for one's position or holding high expectations for staff. These are things I applaud. Rather, we are talking about harassing people, trying to interfere with their employment, berating staff, and the behavior we now know took place in Redwood City. There is a word for this, bullying. As someone who cares about our community's youth and its schools, I'm particularly concerned about the message we are sending to the next generation. Our schools work hard on anti-bullying efforts, teaching respect and civility. What are we telling these students if our city condones very public bullying and harassment that is demonstrated by Commissioner Wong? I hope you will vote to remove Commissioner Wong and send a strong signal to the community and especially the next generation that our city does not condone bullies and stands for civility and respect for all. And I just would like to add one comment in response to something that was said before. After 16 years on the Fremont High School District Board, if there's one thing I learned, it's how smart our students are and we would do well to listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you Bill. Next we have Richard Mellinger, followed by Dolly Sandoval, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome Richard.
Honorable Mayor Wei and council members, my name is Richard Mellinger and I have the honor to serve as council member for Sunnyvale District 5, however, I'm here tonight solely in my personal capacity. I am here to call one last time for R. Ray Wong's removal from the Cupertino Planning Commission. I have been calling for Mr. Wong's removal since he threatened my job in writing four years ago and especially since his atrocious treatment of Mayor Faust came to light. I have done so because like Mr. Wong and like you, council members, I am sworn to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States, which specifically enshrines freedom of speech, a freedom which Mr. Wong has threatened. Council members Zhao and Moore, you voted to reappoint Mr. Wong despite his flagrant violation of his oath of office, city policy, and basic human decency. You could instead have voted to replace him with a candidate of your liking, one aligned with your vision for the city, but without Mr. Wong's obvious moral defense. Had you done so, we would not be here this evening. Council member Moore, council member Zhao, this was both a moral and political error, but tonight you have one of the rarest opportunities that anyone will ever receive. The chance to correct a mistake. I cannot tell you how rarely life presents us with such a chance. I beg you, in the name of your honor, in the name of your city's reputation, take it. Do the right thing. Remove this man from office. Thank you.
Thank you Richard. Next we have Dolly Sandoval, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Sanjeev Kapil. Welcome Dolly.
Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, and city staff. First, I'd like to thank you for the hard work that you've been putting into with regards to governance. You've been doing this since December, once you recognized a change was needed and you've been actively working on it. The February 3rd governance workshop objectives were strengthen the effectiveness of the city council as a governing body, clarify the roles within the governance structure and the administrative structure, and thirdly, establish agreement on norms of working together with staff for the betterment of the Cupertino community. These best practices should be self-evident and really shouldn't even need to be talked about unless there's an issue. I'm here to thank you for that hard work and to also encourage you to improve, to continue to improve that transparency, trust, respect, and accountability. These norms apply to city council members, volunteers, city staff, and city commissioners. All of you in these roles are the face of the city of Cupertino. I hope as you deliberate the item before you this evening, you'll take Commissioner Wong's behavior into account and asking, and ask if he's representing Cupertino and the city on, in an appropriate manner, in the direction in which you would like to take this city with diligence, transparency, trust, respect, and civility. Thank you.
Thank you Dolly. Next we have Jean Bedord, followed by Sanjeev Kapil, followed by Rod Sinks. Welcome Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Wei and council members. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I am here to support removal of Ray Wong from the planning commission. I have personally observed his harassment of residents and staff from the dais. Tonight, however, I'm focusing on another reason to remove R. Wong. On March 1st last week, this council prioritized two projects for addressing homelessness. Continuation of the homeless jobs project and transitional housing, and two, support the unhoused, matters that garnered the support of all five council members. I commend the council for prioritizing these projects in the work plan. We, as a community, need to take action to address these issues. This means that commissions and commission appointees need to support council initiatives. Replacement of appointees for ideological reasons is routine at the national, state, and local levels. Commissioners are, commissions are advisory bodies and need to be on the same page as the city council. Commissioner Wong is not aligned with the city council's priorities as he has publicly stated. Just to correct the record, we don't have a homeless problem. We had a manufactured crisis sponsored by some individuals. I urge you to remove R. Wong and move the city ahead instead of generating negative headlines that make Cupertino the poster child for bad governance in Silicon Valley. Thank you.
Next we have Sanjeev Kapil, followed by Rod Sinks, followed by Philip Lynn. Welcome Sanjeev.
Good evening, council members. I'm here because I was there in the meeting as a planning commissioner last year on May 24th, for which he has been labeled having misbehaved with the staff. 24th, for which he has been labeled having misbehaved with the staff. We spent long hours, four hours at the stretch in those meetings, doing the site selection for the housing element. We had this consultant who was presenting us those details. And in the very next meeting, after four weeks, he, the consultant was absent from the meeting, there were no minutes which were highlighting, highlighted the, the content of the previous meeting where the lot of question answer happened, lot of suggestions happened from the community members. We had nothing to go forward. So at that point, Ray Wong said that, well, we need those, that summary in place. We need A, the consultant to be here, who was there with us when the meeting took place in the last four, for, lasted for four hours. And he did highlight, it is a project management issue. You need to run the city with a capable people who can highlight the gaps. If you do have only the stamp, who can rubber stamp your, your things, how will you run this city? You cannot. You need people who will tell you that where your gaps are and where we need to fill up the, those gaps. At that point, we have nothing to go forward in that particular May 24th meeting. Second thing, I just want to point out to you that, uh, the initiative, whatever you are taking, it will, it will basically set a precedent for the
Thank you, Sanjeev.
For the future commissioners.
Next, we have Rod Sinks, followed by Philip Nguyen, followed by John Zhao. Welcome, Rod.
Thank you. I'm Rod Sinks. I'm a former council member and mayor. Number one, Mercury News, August 19th, 2019, read for yourself about the plea deal. Number two, Mercury News, June 25th, 2019, quote, "In recent posts on next, in neighborhood social media site Nextdoor, Ray Wong, the Planning Commission Chair, called pro-housing activists 'Yimby neoliberal fascists' and suggested fighting back against what he calls 'Yimby harassment' by sending complaints to their employers." Number three, on Nextdoor, Ray wrote, "There are many groups that claim support for affordability, but they are all just fronts for developers and mass density for density's sake." Really? On Nextdoor, number four, Ray wrote about the amount of corruption uncovered between country club members of Cupertino and the city. And he further wrote, "Busy residents don't realize that many of their city's staff and previous corrupt council are fleecing us." Unsubstantiated corruption and fleecing? We're all corrupt? Oh, really? Name another person representing this city who has done any of these things. I know of no one. None of you here. Nobody I know. This is a pattern that could have well been enumerated in the recent grand jury report. And sadly, the same kind of polarization and dysfunction we see in Congress has reached Cupertino. We must be able to be in dialogue with each other to move the city forward, able to disagree while being civil and respectful of each other, refraining from personal attacks. We should hold everyone elected, appointed, and employed by the city to a higher standard. Please do so with your vote tonight.
Next, we have Philip Nguyen, followed by John Zhao, followed by Martin Pine. Welcome, Philip.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, city council members and city staff. Uh, community members have a right to voice their concerns with their representatives. And unfortunately, leaders like Commissioner Wong have created a culture of fear and intimidation because of their past harassment of community members, as well as threats made to my friend, Richard, and city council, Sunnyvale City Council member. Housing and homelessness is a top issue in the minds of Cupertino residents as, and as a planning commissioner, Commissioner Wong has a unique opportunity to promote solutions to end homelessness. But instead, he has downplayed that reality in the housing crisis and like previous speakers before me have mentioned, he says that we don't have a housing, a homelessness problem. Uh, and leaders who deflect unreal problems that are facing Cupertino today are not fit to hold the position. So I ask that you do the right thing and remove Commissioner Wong. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Next, we have John Zhao, followed by Martin Pine, followed by Deepa, Deepika Kapil. Welcome, John.
Hello, Mayor, city council. Uh, my name is John Zhao and I'm speaking as myself only, although I also have experience as chair of the Housing Commission and am currently the chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. I'm here to urge city council to remove Planning Commissioner Ray Wong. I'm not going to repeat all of the allegations that were listed here, but Ray Wong has demonstrated that he won't reform himself. So he must be held accountable for his actions. And that means he needs to be removed. Merrick, Miriam Kamba said, "A person in a position of power, losing their position of power, is not a punishment. It is a consequence of bad action and behavior." When I wrote in to express my concern, Commissioner Wong emailed me, Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Shirin, with veiled threats of a lawsuit. Retaliation for expressing our opinion is not okay. And I'm going to add, just offer another quote. Nora Samaran says, "What would it be like to live in a culture where we could speak up about harm, could say no to it, without fear? Because we know without question that no one in our community will dehumanize each other. What would it be like to know without a doubt that the culture in which we live will require the one who causes harm to empathize with those who harmed, grow and become able to do appropriate repair while humanizing that person too? What would it feel like to trust the fabric of our human community so fully that we would take the risk to belong in this way? I hope you take the right steps to repair and nurture this community." Once again, thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Martin Pine, followed by Deepika Kapil, followed by Dinesha Tekmansky.
Good evening. My name is Martin Pine. I am here tonight as a Sunnyvale resident, speaking solely on my own behalf, but my financial disclosures are available to the public on the Sunnyvale City website. I'm not generally in the habit of commenting on this kind of matter in other cities. I don't live here. But however, this affair has brings disrepute, disrepute, not just to the city of Cupertino, but to public officials everywhere when city commissioners treat their residents, staff, and others with disrespect. If a commissioner, particularly one as in this case with quasid judicial decision-making responsibility, has violated commission and ethics policies by threatening people, it's necessary for that commissioner to face consequences. And that, that's regardless of whether one agrees with said commissioner on the issues. If a planning commissioner is in the habit of bullying others, threatening others, making, making these kind of public statements you've all heard about tonight, that commissioner cannot provide members of the public a hearing that they can trust to be fair. Even if that person is trying in their deepest heart to be fair, based on all the statements you've heard tonight, as a member of the public appearing on that, appearing for the public hearing, I would not have confidence that I was being treated fairly. And that's important for, for a planning commissioner. You were, and we've heard, we've heard reference tonight to all of the letters that have been signed, numbers. You were all elected by a lot more people that have, that have been following this issue, that have been signed letters on either side. I look forward to you, members of the Cupertino City Council, continuing to serve your community honorably and do the right thing tonight.
Thank you, Martin. Next, we have Deepika Kapil, followed by Dinesha Tekmansky. Welcome, Deepika.
Hi, uh, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected council members, J.R. Fuin, Mr. J.R. Fuin, and Ms. Sheila Mohan. Uh, I'd just like to remind them that you're here to serve Cupertino public. I'm here to support Mr. Wong as, as a competent and resident-focused person, as a resident-focused planning commissioner. He's competent. He's, he takes interest in the public and he works with full dedication, integrity, and he delivers the, on the tasks on the table. He's smart and he has open door policy and I would like to support him. And I would also like to say that, uh, he should be allowed freedom of, with the freedom of speech to allow, to speak in his favor, whatever he has comments about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepika. And our final speaker in community hall is Dinesha Tekmansky. And I don't see Dinesha, so. Oh, so someone, uh, mayor, that, I think that would, is that permissible to have someone read her comments for her, for Dina, for Dinesha, on behalf of Dinesha Tekmansky? Would you like to allow that?
She's not coming back? Okay, sure.
I must warn you, I haven't read it, so I don't know what I'm reading. Uh, I find it unbelievable that some of our newer council members are getting involved in personal vendetta by Richard Mellinger, a non-resident of Cupertino, against our esteemed city planner, Ray Wong. We've all been watching this sideshow since 2019. Now, now that Mellinger has friends on the city council, he's using it to waste our tax dollars, council, and staff time, making it our, our city look ridiculous in the media for getting involved in personal political differences. Stupiding to the level of dragging up a 20-year-old unrelated sealed and settled case like it happened yesterday is an attempt to defame Commissioner Wong in both petty and deceitful. Only needs to be look, uh, look at the peninsula Yimby Cupertino for All or Yimby Action Twitter and campaign donations to see the connections and the coordination between cohorts moving to replace Commissioner Wong with someone who aligns with their political agenda. Even our mayor said that she would like to remove commissioners who were appointed by our previous resident-focused council. You already tried to get rid of Stephen Scharf and Kitty Moore and now Wong. This is what you call democracy? Ray Wong is a savvy, very adept city planner who has been twice chair, once vice chair, and well-respected by his peers and residents. This circus has nothing to do with competency or ability to perform his duties. Remember that your job is to serve our residents, no, not the other way around. And bringing, ah, I hate to say this because this is going to be taken wrongly, but she wrote this, so I must, uh, and bringing our high school kids outside of Cupertino. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not hear the beep. Sorry.
Yes. Thank you. So that concludes our speakers in community hall, council chamber. We will now move to Zoom. We have 31 hands raised. So our first speaker is Rick Residence. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you, City Clerk, Mayor Hung Wei. I'll request help from the city clerk to display a single page of text during my turn. It's a PDF document in an email that I sent at 6:30 PM this evening. There you go. Thank you. Uh, I am a Cupertino resident and I support the continued good work of Planning Commissioner Ray Wang. He leads successful projects and serves the community like few others can. His business is respected and requested around the world. His commission completed the housing element work in a timely manner and per state requirement. He serves the community with his integrity by supporting sensible growth and by saving our tax dollars. In Redwood City, he organized and protected residents from treated wastewater. In Cupertino, he stood with Cupertino residents who were verbally assaulted by out-of-city and out-of-state agitators who were hired to promote the Valco project. He demanded cleanup of the toxic Valco site when the city, the developer, and state legislators provided lax oversight. Uh, the housing element contained the required 45888 housing elements, but not an additional 3,000 units as suggested by aggressive growth advocates. The Westport and Marina projects are sensible because the minimal office space and the high proportion of housing moves the region toward a state-mandated balance between office and housing. And he supports local control of planning decisions. In my opinion, any city commissioner or council member should be a steadfast proponent of the city and a champion for preserving local control. He saves our tax dollars by calling out inefficient processes and staff. I'm saddened that this very quality that serves taxpayers is used by the council majority to denigrate and unseat Commissioner Wang. Commissioner Wang possesses a rare and precious set of skills.
And next, we have, oh, let me stop sharing my screen. Next, we have Pamela Hershey, followed by Govind Tadakari, followed by Mooney Matipatla. Welcome, Pamela. Uh, you'll need to unmute yourself, Pamela. There you go.
Greetings. Hershey, and I've been a resident of Cupertino since my parents moved in here in 1967. Uh, Valco was not there. It was orchard when I arrived. I do live right within arm, um, stone's reach of Valco Shopping Center. So for Ray Wang, who is represented, I was a representative for the residents, uh, helped with that. So I have, let me see, I just was trying to get organized. Sorry, I was listening to everyone else. Um, I'm requesting that you not remove Commissioner Ray Wang for the, from the Planning Commission Committee. There's many reasons, and the main one nearest and dearest to my heart is Valco Shopping Center project site. I live within a, a stone throw away, a stone throw away from the site and I see it, I see it every day through my window. So every moment of the day, I am affected by Valco site. It's not like I drive by, not like I live a mile away or two minutes away. I see it out my window every day, all three or four of my home windows. So thankful to do crucial, um, on the fact that certain council members and staff had no qualm about putting residents in harm's way of the Valco site. Now it's listed for TESA site for hazardous materials. The site needs to be cleaned up before anyone can build, yet we have legislators trying to write in a way, trying to bill, oh, I'm sorry, write in a way to bypass the, the cleanup and, and the builder who attempted to cover it up rather than clean it up. Covering up is not acceptable, acceptable to me and my family.
Thank you, Pamela. Next, we have Govind Tadakari. Welcome, Govind.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good, uh, good evening, honorable mayor, we, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. First, let me congratulate the newly sworn council members for completion of the three months on DAAS. Uh, I'm a 30-year Cupertino resident. Understandably, many in Cupertino community and many long-term, um, Cupertino residents are in an uproar, shocked and surprised by the agenda item, removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wang. As an apex municipal government body, the city council majority is fully entitled to appoint commissioners and remove commissioners for a just cause. Just a month ago, the Cupertino City Council Majority appointed a large number of commissioners to various commissions, including two planning commissioners. Why is the removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wang a priority now? I, I, I would like to speak in support of retaining, um, Commissioner R. Wang. As an apex municipal government body, the Cupertino majority must provide oversight of how the city runs. R. Wang has been very helpful in making sure that the Planning Commission delivers on what it is supposed to. Mr. R. Wang has already served admirably on the Planning Commission for a term and is in the middle of his second term. It stands beyond reason as to why Mr. Wang is being singled out and targeted for removal. As of now, the agenda item, removal of this thing looks, uh, removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wang looks like an unjustified vindictive, misdirected, and dictatorial approach. I request the city council majority to act very prudently and cautiously and not set a bad precedent. Removing the Planning Commission without cause in this fashion is bound to stand out as a classic example of bad judgment. Thanking you for your kind and prudent consideration and vote against removal of Mr.
Thank you, Govind. Next, we have Mooney Matipatla, followed by Vikram Saxena, followed by Sean Hughes. Welcome, Mooney.
Good evening, Mayor and the city council. My name is Mooney Matipatla and I am Cupertino resident. I also serve on the Planning Commission, but I'm here today representing myself as a council resident. I humbly request and encourage you to vote no on the agenda item 11, as it is politically motivated vindictive item. Ray is being accused of harassing staff in the May 24th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. I attended that meeting and watched the video again today. In my humble opinion, Ray was demanding accountability from the staff and the consultants as there was literally no progress over a month. Please note, we were paying hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' dollars to these consultants. By the way, these consultants were fired subsequently by the staff. So we should thank Ray for calling them out early on. I worked in the tech industry for over 20-plus years in various leadership roles and I know the difference between holding someone accountable versus harassment. Those that are accusing Ray of harassment probably haven't held any meaningful job in their life. It's prob, it's a politically motivated agenda item to remove Mr. Ray Wang because one of the council members and his founding organization hate Ray for standing up for residents. Ray Wong is a well-accomplished individual, founder and chairman of a well-respected Ray Wong is a well-accomplished individual, founder and chairman of a well-respected technology to search forum called Constellation to Search. Ray is often seen live on CNBC and Fox Business channels commenting about the latest industry direction. Someone that don't know how to treat people cannot be on a live TV. Please don't bring vindictive politics to Cupertino. We are better than that. Let us keep the civility of elected and appointed offices intact.
Thank you, Mooney. Next we have Vikram Saxena, followed by Sean Hughes, followed by Eric Pakwan. Welcome Vikram.
Um, Dean Preston, the San Francisco Supervisor, is a tenant rights activist and attorney for many years. And he's also a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. And he labeled Yimby groups as bizarre developer-backed astroturf movements vegging war on him. We have a similar story playing out in Cupertino where Planning Commissioner Ray Wang, who I'm quite sure does not associate with DSA, is targeted by Yimby group. Officials like Ray Wang and Dean Preston have struck a balance which keeps a check on investors who start to reap billions via unrescined developments on the back of the existing residents' quality of life. But considering a motion to remove Commissioner Wang, the council is sending a message that they do not care about diverse and inclusive representation from the residents whose interests they're supposed to represent. To the city council and the other power brokers like ex-Mayor Richard Loventhal, the choice is yours. You can spend the next two years with inclusive representation and find common ground which can lead to a successful outcome at Valco. Or you can remember what happened with the referendum and spend the rest of your time fighting recalls and, and other public initiative efforts as residents stand up to defend their interest. I would say, don't set the precedent of getting rid of people who are uncomfortable, but work together so that the city can heal and move forward rather than getting into this vindictive warfare which will not end well for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you Vikram. Next we have Sean Hughes, followed by Eric Pakwan, Pakwan, followed by Karen Tesman. Welcome Sean.
Hello, council. I'm calling in to support the removal of Commissioner Wang. His continued behavior as Planning Commissioner frustrates and hinders the commission, commission's core responsibilities. His penchant for inaccurate and salacious language, consistent name-calling of residents who voiced opposition, violation of commission guidelines, lack of respect for city staff make the call for his removal more than justified. Reasonable people can disagree about politics or policies. Debate is essential for committees, much less our democracy to function. But this can only happen if you have constructive dialogues in the first place. We've heard it here again tonight and repeatedly in the past. Commissioner Wang's behavior such as invoking conspiracy theories, red scare tactics, calling his, his opinions resident-focused while in the same breath labeling residents who disagree with him as fascist or developer interests, directly and not so subtly insulting staff, shuts down any necessary constructive dialogue and hinders the commission's ability to function. What's more, after years of complaints and negotiated plea deals on criminal charges, his lack of remorse is troubling to say the least. The decision here is simple. Does this council endorse this kind of behavior from our civil servants? Is this how we want our city to function? Accountability is about removing bullies from a position of power. And if all commenters' passion tonight is indicative of one thing, that is the desire for accountability. I hope that desire is not taken lightly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Next we have Eric Poikon, followed by Karen Tesman, followed by Balaji Chalam. Welcome Eric.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Wei and council members. My name is Eric Poikon and I'm the Vice President of the Silicon Valley Young Dems. I'm here today to voice the strong, my strong support for and alongside with Cupertino community, the removal of Planning Commissioner R Wong, who has repeatedly practiced unethical conduct as clearly demonstrated moments ago. I implore council to honor the lived experiences of those who have been personally harmed by Mr. Wong and to do the right thing. Please honor the intelligence and character of our good residents, especially those Mr. Wong pride, he discredit, who deserve to have genuine trust in officials. The repeated behaviors of Commissioner Wong exhibited an inability to work with others in a leadership capacity. He aggressively lashes out at others who disagree with him and seeks to damage others' livelihood when he does not get what he wants, such as with former council member and Planning Commissioner Roseanne Faust. You would think that this would be a learning experience for them, but unfortunately, it hasn't been. The new city council has begun to undo the damage of the better Cupertino-dominated council with a powerful governance reform package and a response to the civil grand jury report, which reprimanded the last council. For Cupertino and its democracy to truly move forward where all voices feel valued and respected, we must now also hold our appointed officials accountable for their past actions. One where ageist comments and threats to staff will no longer be allowed. Cupertino deserves better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Eric. Next we have Karen Tesman, followed by Balaji Chalam, followed by Ally Saperman. Welcome Karen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Karen Tesman. I'm calling in tonight to briefly tell my story from 2019, which is just one breadthrum in a long trail of unprofessional behavior by Planning Commissioner R Wong. I sent a report of this incident to the Cupertino City Manager and City Attorney in 2019 amidst news reports that made it clear this story was part of a pattern. In June of 2019, I emailed the Cupertino City Council and Planning Commission from my personal email expressing concern about social media posts by Mr. Wong that called friends of mine fascists for supporting the building of new housing and then encouraged his allies to call the workplaces of housing supporters and threaten their livelihood. These incidents have been documented in the San Jose Mercury News. Mr. Wong didn't respond to that email. Instead, he identified and then called my workplace. He spoke with our company's receptionist, falsely told her he had an appointment to speak with me and got connected to my work line. We had about a 20-minute conversation during which I urged him to, as a public official, stop using his social media platform to encourage the intimidation of community activists by contacting their workplaces and pointed out that him calling me through my workplace falls under that umbrella. This is a relatively small incident, but it is part of a disturbing, unprofessional trend. The city of Cupertino deserves to have commissioners who don't stoop to threats and name-calling and to contacting people's workplaces under false pretenses, in addition to the other disturbing accounts described today. I urge the Cupertino City Council to remove R Wong from the planning commission.
Thank you Karen. Next we have Balaji Chalam, followed by Ally Saperman, followed by Luis Sedadi.
Oh, hi, my name is Balaji Chalam. I'm a Cupertino resident for 24 years. I would like the city clerk to play the video clip I sent this afternoon as my public comment. Thank you.
I will play right now.
Well, here's what I heard, right? I mean, there were some laws, they're trying to rewrite the commission handbook and the city council guides and all that kind of stuff. And they're like trying to make a rule that says, you know, if you were serving on the city before, you can actually serve on a commission later on. Trying to create those kind of restrictions. Like it'd be better if they said like, if you're a former elected official, you couldn't lobby like for like five years. Like that would be a better rule. But they were trying to figure out ways if they could retroactively take out Stephen Scharf, our two-time mayor, you know, the current chair, twice of the planning commission, because they also don't agree with his view. Right? So, so, so that's, that's kind of what it looks like. This is a massive politically biased approach to take out people they don't agree with. Now to your question about planning commission, why is planning commission important? The commission's important because we, we do a couple of things. Like we are responsible for the general plan and zoning and ordinances. And, and our job is becoming less important because the state is trying to take away those rights. Like if you don't want like a 15-story, you know, multi-unit next to your single-family home, that's what zoning rules do. Right? If you want to make sure that school areas are safe and don't have, you know, sites that are selling tobacco and liquor and pornography and, you know, bail bonds. I mean, that's what zoning does, right? And so planning is so important in creating those local ordinances. If you don't want to have toxic materials in sites on your developed location, let's say like Valco and we'll just name it, right? That's what planning does. And we have a great city councilwoman, Kitty Moore, who is our Erin Brockovich, that said, hey, look, this land is.
Okay, that is the time for that item. Next we have Ally Saperman, followed by Luis Sedadi, followed by Jaria Jog. Welcome Ally.
Hi, my name's Ally Saperman. I'm calling in on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition and as a proud member of South Bay Yimby. Organizations that are based on the belief that all people deserve housing and that people should be protected by NIMBY fearmongering and harassment. Commissioner Wang's numerous Commissioner Code violations, his well-documented pattern of harassment and intimidation, and his blatant and repeated legal violations make him wholly unfit to hold public office of any kind. Many commentators tonight have asked why so many people are embarrassed by Cupertino. This is a really great example of why so many people are embarrassed of Cupertino. This behavior should not be tolerated. And without your swift movement tonight, this precedent will continue and people will continue to talk in the media and elevate this issue until we finally take action and make things right and remove Commissioner Wang for all of his egregious violations. Thank you.
Thank you Ally. Next we have Luis Sedadi, followed by Jaria Jog, followed by John Geis. Welcome Luis.
Hello, I'm Luis Sedadi and, um, I, I'm, uh, home in bed with COVID. Otherwise I would be there in person speaking. Uh, the removal of Commissioner Wang is long overdue and the city councils should take action now. Residents have called for his removal for over three years. This removal is not based on liking or not liking him or housing. It is based on his repeated unethical behaviors. He has engaged in sexual harassment. Roseanne Faust, council member and planning commissioner, brought charges against him and is here tonight to speak. He took a plea deal on these charges, including felony identity theft and played no contest to misdemeanor cyber stalking. As planning commissioner, he urged residents to call employers of pro-housing activists to try to get them fired from their jobs. Who does that? He mistreats staff and team members. He excoriated senior planner Eric Chirano during the Canyon Crossing and Batte Brothers Project review. He has issued intimidating messages to city commissioners. He has violated the commissioner's handbook many times. Two examples, an attempt to have a high-ranking employee fired and attempting to prioritize, direct and supervise city staff and consultants. His lies includes, quote, "We must save the suburbs from an onslaught of anarchists and Yimby neoliberal fascists." And he has compared our elections to elections in the Soviet Union. Who does that? This repeated behavior of Ray Wang exhibit an inability to work with others and his removal is.
Thank you Luis. Next we have Jaria Jog, followed by John Geis, followed by Callie Wang. Welcome Jaria.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jaria Haug and I'm the Communications Director for the Silicon Valley Young Dems, a group that represents dozens of young Democrats across the South Bay. I'm here today, tonight to support our strong support for the removal of Planning Commissioner R Wong for his repeatedly committed patterns of unethical conduct. This is not a matter of politics. This is a matter of holding him accountable for disturbing actions he has done to fellow Cupertino community members, including spreading misinformation, mistreating city staff, antagonizing community members, violating the Commissioner handbook and committing sexual harassment. He has been called out for removal for over three years and it exemplifies his inability to work with others and his obscene aggression towards those who disagree with him. We stand in strong support of removing him from leadership because Cupertino, Cupertino deserves decency in its leadership. Thank you.
Thank you Jaria. Next we have John Geis, followed by Callie Wang, followed by Seba. Welcome John. You'll need to unmute yourself, John. Star six to unmute, okay.
Hello, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is John Geis and I've been a resident of Cupertino for over 25 years. I was really reluctant to speak up tonight because I don't like to speak ill of people. However, I have viewed multiple instances where Planning Commissioner Ray R Wong exhibits bullying and uncivil behavior. I felt sadness and empathy for the recipients of Mr. Wong's behavior who were residents and city staff. I realized that the recipients were victims. I felt a need to speak up for the victims. I felt a need to speak up about Mr. Wong's uncivil behavior on multiple occasions. So I'm here tonight adding one more voice in support of the victims. I am here tonight adding one more voice of support to remove Mr. Wong from the planning commission. I have seen civil discourse and respectful discussion decline in our country. The decline has arrived in our city. I want to stop the decline of civil discourse and in Cupertino. I request that the council take action and remove Mr. Wong from the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next we have Callie Wang, followed by Seba, followed by Vera. Welcome, Callie.
Hello, everyone, Mayor and City Council. I, I gotta admit, I really didn't feel like coming up to speak today, but seeing, seeing what was going on and the pattern, pattern of harassment and abuse was documented, I felt like it was at least important for me to speak. Um, there's no secret that this is a divided community. There's no secret that people disagree on the big issues. But disagreement does not have to be divisive. Conflict does not have to be abuse. What does foster division is threatening to harass residents, making threats against them and, and things beyond that matter. That is what contributes to so much of the division and, and the hate that we're seeing. This is why the things arguably are so heated right now. It doesn't matter where you stand on the issues, but for a public official to threaten residents and to call people to workplaces and threaten to get them fired, that strikes me as beyond the pale. That hurts the legitimacy of the Cupertino council, the planning commission, and it hurts their ability to do what's right for all the residents. I hope that City Council keeps all this in mind, keeps in mind the code of conduct and code of ethics for commissioners and public officials because they have a brave decision to make tonight and I hope they treat it with some appropriate gravity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Callie. Next we have Seba, followed by Vera, followed by Mina. Welcome, Seba.
Hi, um, and good evening, everyone. I was excited when the new council was elected. As typically new members, council members bring new ideas to the city services and interests. But, uh, today I'm disappointed with the recent developments. I'm especially concerned about the current agenda item which is unprecedented to remove Planning Commissioner from his position. I don't know Mr. Wong, but as a member of this community, I strongly protest the possibility of such decision and the precedent it will set for the future city government. I know the commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council. Uh, I'm concerned that potential removal of the, uh, Planning Commissioner is being considered without a clear guideline or such criteria for its effect. This lack of transparency and accountability creates a dangerous precedent for the future city councils to remove commissioners appointed by the previous council without proper cause or justification. I urge you to vote no. It is crucial that city maintains a strong and independent planning commission which can serve as a check and balance for the interests of the developer and to ensure city grows in a sustainable and equitable way. Thank you.
Thank you, Seba. Next we have Vera, followed by Mina, followed by Kamya, Kamya Mashin. Welcome Vera. I see you unmuted yourself, so you should be able to speak. Uh, okay, so we will come back to Vera. We'll go on to Mina. Welcome, Mina. Mina, I see you've unmuted, so you should be able to speak. Okay, appears we're having some technical difficulties for these two people, so we'll move on to Kamya Mashin. And then we'll go back. Welcome Kamya.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council and Staff. Uh, I'm speaking in support of the removal of Planning Commissioner Wong. As numerous speakers have described at length tonight, Mr. Wong's conduct as a commissioner has been toxic and retaliatory towards city staff and members of the community. Mr. Wong's behavior while on the planning commission speaks for itself and is grounds enough for removal on its own. However, I do believe that Mr. Wong's harassment of a Redwood City public official in 2003 is relevant here too. That incident is an early example of a pattern of behavior. Mr. Wong will relentlessly bully those who are opposed to his political goals. That is what he did in 2003 and what he continues to do on the commission today. The fact that back then, the civil case was settled and the criminal charges were dropped as part of a plea deal does not change the fact that those allegations are credible. Uh, they may be two decades old, but if anything, that proves Mr. Wong's unwillingness to change. He has had more than enough time to learn and engage, learn to engage with staff and the community members in a civil. learn to engage with staff and the community members in a civil and productive manner. But instead, he continues to double down on his conspiracy theory about his account having been hacked by developers. This kind of behavior has no place in Cupertino government and the City Council must step in. I am sorry that it has come to this, but people have been pointing out Mr. Wong's conduct for years now. This is nothing new. Unfortunately, the City Council chose to reappoint Mr. Wong to the Planning Commission in 2019, choosing him over numerous more qualified and less toxic candidates. I hope the council will have the courage to correct this mistake today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamya. Next we have Scott O'Neill, followed by Andrew Segler, followed by Rajat Mandirata. Welcome, Scott.
Hi, thank you. I'm speaking for myself tonight. I live in Palo Alto, don't have strong ties to Cupertino. Worst of all, I'll admit it, I use Torq for Microsoft. I usually don't comment on matters outside my city, but my city's mayor wrote in defense of the commissioner, so making a rare exception, I'll be quick. Harassment is not okay. I reviewed the history of questionable alleged behavior from Commissioner Wong, which goes back 15 years. Lots of coverage in Spotlight, Merck, other outlets. There always has to be room for redemption, but that requires contrition, not blaming elite hacksaw developers. We shouldn't be taking our earnest disputes about public policy to people's employers threatening their livelihoods. We should try to keep our work environments non-toxic. You've heard personal accounts tonight detailing a pattern of transgressive behavior. I don't see how it can go ignored in the context of the grand jury report. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And I'm gonna try Vera one more time. Vera, welcome. You did unmute yourself. Perhaps you'll want to try calling in instead of using your computer. So we'll go to Andrew Segler, followed by Rajat Mandirata, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Bond, and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrew Segler and I am a student at Deans College. Cupertino is dear to me. I love my school, I love the beauty of this town, and I love the people here. It's not all sunshine and rainbows, though, which is why I'm here today to voice my strong support for the item 11, the removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wong. He has repeatedly practiced unethical conduct. Let's be clear, this is not a political process. This is about repeated patterns of bad conduct. Unfortunately, those defending him have chosen to politicize this. Tonight, R. Wong talked about not engaging in divisive politics and I've been hearing his supporters call the proposal vindictive. Well, let's look at his track record. While in office, he urged fellow residents to call employers of pro housing activists to try to get them fired for good jobs. Talk about divisive politics. Talk about vindictive. During the removal process, he issued intimidating messages to city commissioners if they exercised their first amendment right to criticize his conduct. Talk about divisive politics. Talk about vindictive. He sexually harassed former City Council member Roseanne Faust for her vote on recycled water use by signing her up for porn sites with her email and then claimed the interest groups around recycled water hacked his computer. Talk about divisive politics. Talk about vindictive and talk about lack of accountability. Nobody's perfect and everyone makes mistakes. But when you fail to take accountability for those mistakes and do not change the behavior, it's incredibly problematic. The removal of Commissioner Wang is long overdue and the City Council should take action now. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next we have Rajat Mandirata, followed by San Ar, followed by Cam Coulter. Welcome, Rajat.
Hi, I'm Rajat Mandirata and I'm an average resident of Cupertino. I'm speaking in support of item 11 and I speak for myself and myself alone. I want to ask a fundamental question. Is this man qualified for this job? This is what Ray Wang has recently and publicly said about residents that disagree with him. Track down their employer and send their HR, legal, and CEO a letter outlining their stance. It goes a long way to getting them reprimanded. Under California Labor Code Section 1102, this type of reprimand is illegal. So not only does he try to bully residents, but his plan to do so is so poorly thought out and kind of pathetic. Do we want a public official who belittles residents' political participation? You saw some of them tonight. And just Google his name and you will find the kind of past a man runs away from legally changing his name. Ask yourself, is R. Wong the kind of man you'd give any amount of power over your life? Is this what inclusive representation and democracy look like? Is this man fit to hold office? Council members, don't be intimidated. Do the right thing. The city has no shortage of smart, sane, sincere people and let's have some decency in our leadership. And Mr. Wong, if you'd like my employer's details, please email me and I'd be happy to share them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajat. Next we have San Ar, followed by Cam Coulter, followed by Dan Marshall. Welcome, San.
Good evening, City Council. I would like to urge you to vote no on the removal of Commissioner Wong. And the reason for that that I would like to offer is that your residents will get a chilling message from the removal to never volunteer for civic office in the city. This is not about Commissioner Wong. This is about what it takes to stand for any role in the city. And to council members on the day, I urge you to think about encouraging stakeholder participation in local commissions and committees and not have to have the fear that they will be subjected to ridicule and the public scrutiny that you're seeing Commissioner Wong go through. Commissioner Wong has a very successful career. He has no reason to be in these commissions. He does it purely for a sense of giving back to the community and to go through this kind of public scrutiny for something that should be outside of the purview from 20 years ago, outside of the city, is something to look at. The second thing is ethics training for commissioners. I'm not sure if it covers next-door training. I'd like to make sure that you look at whether current ethics training for commissioners is covering next-door policies. I'd also like to point out that the next-door messaging is used by multiple existing and new commissioners as well, as some of the speakers that spoke today. So next door is not the basis for making this decision. I urge you to look at the impact, the chilling impact this will have on residents who will never want to volunteer again. And finally, I want to say the replacement, the first alternate will be a hotel operator and developer.
Next we have Cam Coulter, followed by Dan Marshall, followed by Adam Buckbinder. Welcome, Cam.
Hello, good evening. My name is Cam Coulter. I am here to voice my strong support for removing Planning Commissioner R. Wong. It seems obvious to me that Wong has repeatedly abused his position of authority and power to harass residents and leaders in the community, has exhibited an inability to work with others in a leadership capacity, and has generally behaved in ways that are not appropriate for an appointed official. We should hold our appointed officials to a serious and meaningful standard of ethics and genuine leadership. R. Wong does not meet that standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Cam. Next we have Dan Marshall, followed by Adam Buckbinder, followed by Eric Linskog. Welcome, Dan. Dan, you'll need to unmute. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm speaking to urge the City Council to vote for this motion. The City Council was elected by the public. One of the most important things for them to accomplish and work with is the Planning Department. It's pretty clear that there's a lot of friction between the City Council and Mr. Wong. They need somebody in that position that they can work with. Therefore, I think they should remove Mr. Wong. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next we have Adam Buckbinder, followed by Eric Linskog, followed by Rafael Villagracia. Welcome, Adam.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hi, my name is Adam. I used to live in Cupertino until I was priced out the farther reaches of the South Bay. I'm honored to hold an appointed office in my new home city. Commissioner Wong has engaged in unthinkably unbecoming conduct, including but not limited to non-consensually sending pornography to political opponents trying to get people he disagrees with fired, and unhinged rhetoric from someone who should be setting an example. It was impressed on me from my first day of service that I'm to be held to a high standard of ethical, even-handed conduct. I can have strong opinions on policy, but it's important to never make it personal. Part of my job to treat the people of my city as well as my fellow officials and people who are just calling in with respect. It not only shows a lack of judgment and character that he failed to uphold these ideals, but that he didn't immediately resign in shame, even when these acts became public. Mr. Wong may not have the decency to leave office, but the City Council can do it for him. I wish him luck in his future endeavors, far away from public service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Next we have Eric Linskog, followed by Rafael Villagracia, followed by Abdullah Memmon. Welcome, Eric. You'll need to unmute, Eric.
Mayor and City Council members, I would like to thank everyone that has spoken tonight, calling for the removal of Ray Wang from the Planning Commission. These people have been very brave. Why? Because Ray Wang frequently responded to criticism and people he does not agree with, belittling, bullying, and intimidation tactics, shutting down people's voices. This is not an acceptable quality of a city official in a democratic society. I therefore call for the City Council to remove Ray Wang from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next we have Rafael Villagracia, followed by Abdullah Memmon, followed by Peter. Welcome, Rafael.
Hello, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rafael Villagracia and I'm a former Cupertino community member who attended Deans College. I was involved in the Measure C and D discussions and I still spend a considerable amount of my days in the city. I'm here today utilizing methods that Planning Commissioner Ray Wong would be proud of, complaining to his employer, that being the city, of course. I'm calling in today to support item 11, the removal of Commissioner Wong for his repeated bad conduct. It reflects poorly on the city's leadership and has contributed to an atmosphere of intimidation and bullying. I support the steps the City Council is taking to make a vibrant democracy. I'll also add, sure, like everyone, I've probably gotten, quote, "lost in the heat of the moment" before, but I've never had that result in sexual harassment and impersonation allegations. If people really want that on a city commission, their kids here. I hope everyone in the room makes sure their email addresses are safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rafael. Next we have Abdullah Memmon, followed by Peter, followed by Shiv Cavuluru. Welcome, Abdullah.
Hello, City Council. My name is Abdullah Memmon. I'm a lifelong Cupertino resident, a competent high school student, and someone who works in the city. I grew up in Biarma Housing and I have been alarmed by R. Wong's common surrounding housing. I hope in the future I can continue to afford to live in this city, continue a career in service, and raise a family. I hope in the future Cupertino will be a leader in inclusivity and innovation. In doing so, it is important to have leadership of integrity and quality today. I think the biggest way to determine the integrity of leadership is by determining how city leaders treat staff, which is why I wanted to share a video with all of you. This shows how Commissioner Wong treats our hardworking staff and speaks for itself. He disrespect them and does not follow rules on how commissioners should conduct themselves. The video will show today's decision is not about politics, it is about quality of leadership. And the video I emailed today, XO9.
Yes, let me run it quickly with the remaining time.
And, you know, maybe it's an over-reliance in consultants that we don't have a gut feel or maybe we're just not, just being nice, right? We're being nice and passive-aggressive with our consultants, but something seems amiss, right? And so I'm just asking a few questions here because I'm really baffled, right? In not being able to get stuff done, this is stuff I could do in like three hours or people here could do in five hours or we'd be happy to chip in. Like, because this doesn't make sense. Put that spreadsheet together? Like, an intern can do that in less than two hours. Okay, so something is off, right? And we've all been in these kind of projects before. We've managed these complexity of projects and it's not acceptable. So first question I have is, do we feel EMC is competent in meeting our needs? Like, are they doing a good job? Did they meet their performance milestones? Like, do we have a performance kind of contractor? And I know, I know, I'm like, you know, I'm in the private sector and we get stuff done.
Okay, so next we have Peter, followed by Shiv Cavuluru, followed by Mina. Welcome, Peter. You'll just need to unmute Peter. Okay, I don't see you're unmuting. I'm asking you to unmute. So perhaps we will come back to you after Shiv Cavuluru. Welcome, Shiv.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Respected staff and council members, the truth of Ray Wong's abhorrent behavior has and is in front of you all. You have the power to make sure it doesn't continue to be. We wouldn't be here tonight if Ray had not sewn division and hate into the fabric of Cupertino. Ray lies and stalks those who disagree with him. Unless, you would too, please don't align yourself with him by sharing a title as a public leader. Expecting accountability from our elected officials isn't ridiculous. Respecting women should not be a political issue. Believing survivors of sexual harassment should not be a partisan issue. I find it gravely troubling tonight that those crying loudest for democracy are also the ones enabling Ray Wong's creepy history of silencing, censoring, and threatening anyone who speaks out against him. My Cupertino Unified School District education taught me that when those in powerful government positions who silence those who dissent via money, power, and threat and intimidation tactics... Last I checked, that's a word that starts with F and ends with ISM. I encourage council members to see Ray's removal in this situation as an invitation for Ray to step back and hopefully become better. If you don't remove Ray Wong tonight, then you're also robbing him of the opportunity to grow into becoming a safe member for Cupertino because you're allowing his behavior to continue. If you don't vote to remove Planning Commissioner Ray today, I worry about who he will plan and stalk tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Shiv. Next we have, we'll try Peter again, followed by Mina, followed by Ava Chow. Welcome, Peter. Please unmute. Okay, we're still having technical issues. If you'd like to try calling in, we'll go to the next speaker, Mina. Welcome back. See if you...
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I just got disconnected accidentally. And I'm a Cupertino resident for more than 10 years. I just speak to support Ray Wong because he has a long record of care about local community and listen to residents. And I want to give an example like the 5G tower issue. And a lot of residents, they have concern about the 5G tower because they know the number, the quantity is much more than before. And Ray Wong is the one, he listened to residents because he knows there's more towers scattered in neighborhood than the past. And yes, we know the impact is smaller than before, but that doesn't mean we can just build it anywhere. So to protect residents, Wong, he pushed for an action taken to create the standard for where and how many towers we can build in neighborhood and to get some rule to define maybe the distance and the density. And he tried very hard to seek accountability of staff for digging out a solution. And I just want to say that hold staff accountable, that's completely different from bully. If a commissioner or council just sit there like being a rubber stamp, is that a really qualified commissioner or council?
Thank you, Mina. That is your time. And our final speaker is Ava Chow. Welcome, Ava.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ava Chow. I am a high school teacher. And I really, I am speaking upon item 11. I am in support of removing R. Wong because his behavior as a public commissioner for the city of Cupertino, we need someone who are good examples for our students. We cannot condone behavior of belittling and harassing our city staff and our citizens. and our citizens. A citizen can express publicly, as I am publicly, in a public area and not be concerned about being harassed later on for their opinions. We are adults. We live in a democratic society where we have the right to express things in a way that is in a very professional manner. And we need to have good examples of that, and this is why I support in removing R. Wong, because as a teacher, we need, our students need, good examples of good behavior in the public area. Thank you very much and appreciate your time. And especially considering Ms. Liang Chow. She is, was a former school board member, and I hope she does vote in support of removing R. Wong, because this is, we need good examples for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. We have one more person that raised their hand. William Lin. Welcome, William.
Hello, my name is William Lin. I'm a previous Cupertino resident, moved out due to college. I support the removal of R. Wong, due to his comment of the manufacturing of homeless. In California, you can see homeless everywhere, such as Oakland, New Cupertino. There's no shortage of high cost of living, and so the manufacturing of homeless cannot be far from the truth. We can see homelessness on the streets, and we can see the need for shelters and affordable living all over the place. There are people who are poor that may be the next homeless. How can we say that supporting people, not just the manufacturing of homeless, but also the manufacturing of people who might become homeless, would also not be a problem, just a voice that is stated and not to be seen? We see the riches and we see the poors all over the news, but who do we need to support? We need to support everybody, but in terms of people who need our support should not be looked at as just the news, just the media, and just the political world stating things. And his comments are very hurtful to me and my community. My parents came here very hardworking to support me when I was here. And if without them, I would be homeless, stating that if the America did not have this treaty to allow my parents to come, they would be homeless in their own country. So many people who come to America were poor, and they came here for a better life. If we don't recognize that issue now, we would be in a big trouble. So I support him being removed, because he would not care for the homelessness and affordable housing. That's a big problem with his comment. Thank you for listening, council members.
Thank you, William. And Mayor, I'm sorry, one more person just raised their hand. Jordan Grimes, welcome, Jordan.
Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. I'll keep my comments short and savory. Planning commissioners are supposed to serve the public, not terrorize them. Remove R. Wong and bring his reign of terror to an end. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. And Mayor, I will...
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I, we heard a lot, and I'd like to come back to our council members. And please use five minutes or less, because I think we've heard a lot, and I think we can express our points of view in less than five minutes. So I'm going to really not extend, and it's been 10:30. Do we, uh, City Attorney, do we need to extend our meeting?
So, no, you, you do not need to vote to extend until 11 o'clock. At, at that point, we would need to extend the meeting to start a new item. I believe the city manager might have a question about that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Through to Mayor, we do have another item scheduled be after this item. Looking at the time, we'd like to know the desire of the council to either consider that tonight or at a later date.
Yeah, when we come back, come to 11 o'clock, the setting we finish is by 11 o'clock. Okay, so council members, you each have five minutes. Who would like to speak first? I think I saw Councilmember Moore's light is up. Councilmember Moore, please limit to five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Cupertino City Council recently adopted restrictive policies for the city council commissioners and members of the public to follow, eliminating council's ability to speak on the individual informational items and prohibiting council members to exercise their lawful right to do public records requests. I do not agree with a number of these restrictions, and noted that there was no process in place for any violations for council members. And as we see here today, there is no policy in place for due process regarding any warning, admonition, probation, or removal of our commissioners. The city council has the curious position here of being the executive, legislative, and judicial branches all rolled into one. That is because commissioners in Cupertino merely serve at the pleasure of the council and may be removed by a majority of council for the offense of causing the council to not be pleased. I've tried to formulate some metric for whether Commissioner Wong's work has been acceptable, because we have no supportable process. I could fill a book between the smear blog, the 2016 $7 million campaign by the developer, and the 2018 Ballative Initiative Disruptors, and the continued hounding. I was appointed to the planning commission at the start of 2019, along with Commissioner Wong. That very first day, when I came into these chambers, I was pulled aside by our Assistant City Attorney and advised that I was going to be verbally abused by members of the public, and I was offered some friendly advice. And sure enough, current newly-elected Sunnyvale Councilmember Mellinger came to oral communications, brought up a next-door post I had made in 2018, expressed his offense at it, and told me I needed to resign on my first day. In 2019, the negative attention appeared to move off of me and onto Commissioner Wong with Sunnyvale Councilmember Mellinger and other familiar individuals. Commissioner Wong has been extremely thorough about the agenda packet reviews, does his site visits with diligence, provides thoughtful and interesting comments, and has a global perspective from his extensive worldwide travel, advanced economic and financial information, public health education, his television appearances. And not only does he do the homework on the agendas, he finds time to author books, do interviews, and host conferences and events. Commissioner Wong's bio is amazing, and he has an outgoing personality which goes along with it. I recall Commissioner Wong's struggle trying to agendize 5G, and it was a frustrating struggle I faced trying to get items on the agenda when I was chairing committees. I've had multiple struggles with that and have had multiple meetings I was chairing be canceled by staff without checking in with me. Commissioner Wong rightfully complained about the "very tardy" housing element. The city council has been publicly admonished by members of the public for being exposed to the builder's remedy because the contractor was not able to complete the housing element on time. The city manager even ended their contract. And tonight, after months have elapsed, we have a new consultant contract on the agenda, which we passed, and Commissioner Wong's frustration was more than echoed even by his opponents. Council needs to formulate a policy like Las Gatos for commissioners, which would address censure and removal. They have a commissioner who was recently censured, and that has drawn the attention of the ACLU, for example. The policy should be thoughtfully formed. I cannot agree with simply removing Commissioner Wong with the pleasure or not metric without a process. Barring a knowable training and removal process, after witnessing how it unfolds here with no process in place, I request that council agendize a policy process for admonition, probation, censorship, and removal of any commissioners, and also provide some process for council so that we're not relying on subjective views and have steps in the process. I'm deeply concerned for all of our commissioners who volunteer their time, effort, and energy that we are sending a message that council is vengeful. In the history of Cupertino, no planning commissioner has been removed by council, which is likely why there has not been a discussion residing, residing, regarding, pardon, policy to do so, and I request that be done now. We should have also set some limits, time limits, so that we're not having vengeance on old news and retroactively punishing when we want to grow our commissioners and council members and encourage young people and those who find this kind of meeting truly off-putting to want to join in the community engagement process and feel comfortable participating in civics. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have a light from any other council members? Anybody would like to make you take your five minutes comment? If not, Councilmember Chow? All right, you have five minutes.
It is interesting to see that we have many Cupertino community members outside of Cupertino who wrote to us with the template letters. Many are from San Jose, San林Campbell, Los Gatos, Sunnyvale, Oakland, even from Los Angeles. How popular Cupertino is. I'd like to speak from my lived experience of someone who has been attacked by many who have spoken here today. Even when I know firsthand of the words I said and the context I said it, I have found that often your seemingly convincing claims against me are totally false. This has happened repeatedly here, both outside of council meeting and here in the council meeting, even today. Therefore, I'm afraid I cannot trust any one-sided narratives against someone without evidence showing exactly what was said and under what circumstances. Let alone, most of the speakers today asking for the removal of R. Wen did not have any firsthand experience with their claim. Many of the claims made in the civil grand jury report on Cupertino are false and inaccurate, as indicated by the city responses. Many were made by someone who totally did not understand how things work in city government, since a simple email to the city could have clarified some issues, but they never wrote to the city. This is why one-sided narratives are not trustworthy. Now, when such one-sided negative narratives are spread by people who seek to gain political power, one must wonder about the accuracy of such narratives. When you have a hundred people repeat the same one-sided narrative, it does not make them come true. Today, the handful of people who likely had the firsthand narrative today happen to be those who repeatedly attacked, mischaracterized my comments in order to attack me falsely. I'm afraid that I cannot trust their one-sided narratives without hard evidence. I'm asking you to respect my lived experience of someone who has been attacked multiple times by those with political aims. This is why we don't commit people for a crime merely based on one-sided narratives. We have a due process, cross-examination before committing someone for a crime. Here, we are trying to commit someone in the eyes of public opinion based merely on one-sided narratives. The reality is that even if the council doesn't like the recommendation made by Planning Commission, the council can simply choose not to take their recommendation. And I have always requested to see not only majority recommendation, but also minority recommendation from commissioners, in case there is a split vote. And I have asked to include the rationales for recommendations so that we take all perspectives into account. Therefore, there is really no need to remove R. Wen in reality, except for political revenge. As we have praised the city staff when they have done a good job today and every day, R. Wen has done the same thing. But when there is an issue in the performance of city government, we, as elected officials and appoint officials, must speak up. Otherwise, why are we sitting here? This is our responsibility, and when we speak up, yes, we should watch our tone of voice, but the context matters. The, it is the necessity to speak up matters. How much truth is in the statement said today? Some of these people have attacked me by twisting my words to manufacture a perception they wish to create. Mayor Wei, I motioned to support you to be the mayor because I put my trust in you that you will be collaborative and not be utilized by those with political games. I trust that you will use common sense and try to mend the community rather than further divide us, as you have demonstrated today. To allow R. Wen five minutes to speak and allow a member to read a comment by another who has to leave, you are a person who is reasonable. Every city council before today has the discretion to remove commissioners, but they did not. Not, no newly-elected council members have ever attempted to remove commissioners as soon as they got on the council. Don't set such a divisive precedent for Cupertino to remove a commissioner based on one-sided narrative apparently brought on by those with political aims in mind. Councilmember Mohan, I think you, I respect that. You are another person who has common sense also. You are not like them. You are better than them. I would ask that you, without evidence, do not take action to remove any commissioner today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Do, do we have another speaker? Okay, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
This is a somber moment for all of us this evening. I don't think there's anyone on this dais or in the audience who takes pleasure in any, in dealing with this matter. I myself have agonized over, over this for the past several days, and here's what I want to say. When I ran for city council just a few months ago, one of my priorities was to bring good governance back to the city. To me, good governance included a clear understanding of what is expected from elected and appointed officials, and our responsibilities to the community to ensure trust and confidence. The grand jury report, which was released a few weeks after the election, validated many of my concerns. While there's absolutely no disagreement that we all care about the well-being of the entire Cupertino community, there are clearly disagreements about how to go about accomplishing this. We have seen hundreds of emails these last few days, representing a wide range of opinions and recommendations. I have read them all, and while I don't agree with many of them, I do respect what you have to say and the time and effort you put into public engagement. However, the action we are considering today has little to do with Planning Commissioner Wong's knowledge of the planning process or his knowledge of housing issues, but it has everything to do with his conduct. As a city commissioner, Ray Wong is a leader. He's a representative of the city, and in many situations, the face of the city. Like all leaders, he must adhere to a code of ethics and the ethics policy put in place by the previous city council in 2020, just like we all have to. This has not been the case here. Without going into all the details, there have been numerous incidents where Ray Wong crossed the line, where he has repeatedly demeaned staff and made unsubstantiated allegations against them, and where his conduct had the potential to place the city at risk in terms of employment practices liability. This is all on public record. It is unacceptable and reflects poorly on our city. Thank you.
I'd like to be the next one to say something. I, I prepared a whole thing, but I changed everything. I want to really ask Ray Wong's friends or supporters. Yes, he can be a very good neighbor, charming person. You support his policies. You support his, you know, his points of view. That's all fine. Here, I want you to put yourself. I want you to be Roseanne Faust. About 20 years ago, when she had a three-year-old and an eight-year-old, when she had a full-time job, when she saw this computer thing coming up and shocked. And she doesn't live here, and she doesn't have to write another letter to us. But 20 years later, she wrote to us. I hope you all read her letter. And I want you to calm yourself down and be Roseanne right now. I'm only going to read the last part of her, her letter. You are Roseanne Faust. And you said, "We are now in 2023, and again, I'm reliving how I felt." And you said, "We are now in 2023, and again, I'm reliving how I felt when those sign-ups and images came through my computer screen." While his malicious conduct in furthering his civic and personal aims was nearly 20 years ago against me, it was and still immorally reprehensible, and he continues to do harm to others. I have always been very clear to my daughters about standing up for themselves. I am now taking my own advice and sharing this with you so you can decide whether his character and values are such that he should be serving now in public office." She doesn't, Roseanne doesn't have to do this. And I, this is her personal testimonial. If you don't believe in personal testimonials, I don't know what you will believe in. And we have multiple personal testimonials from our own residents, and I'm not even going to mention that. I want, I stepped into her shoe and I felt her angst and how it took her courage to write something like this. So, I have three minutes left. I really want to say something about our teenagers and our next generation. I want to quote something that my colleague, my old colleagues from Fremont Union High School District Board, Bill Wilson, has said, but I'm going to use my own words. As for someone, I think all of you care about our community's youth, and you love to give our community youth good examples, not about Commissioner Wong's political beliefs or how charming he can be, or he can be a good neighbor. But his behavior is not a role model for our next generation. Our schools work hard on anti-bullying efforts, teaching respect and civility. What we're telling our students is that our city, do we condone this very public bullying harassment, or we don't? Think about it. We are here not to decide on political sides. I think we're being criticized that we are doing this because of political sides. I want to ask everyone who supports Commissioner Wong, are you doing it because you agree with his political sides? You're his friends? Or do you condone the behaviors of such that he is using @cupidino.org represents Cupertino? So, I really want to say that it's not about political agenda. It's, we can appoint, like, one of the, one of the speakers has said, the previous council could have appointed someone who is, has, you know, alliance with the political agenda of them, but not as bullying or abrasive or harassment, you know, behaviors like this. I do believe when he was appointed, somebody did come and say something, but this is not a political agenda. I want you to be the persons that he's been harassed, especially the lady who's 20 years ago still have to write that letter to us. I want you to step into her shoe and be her and feel what she felt and ask ourselves, can we allowed someone like this to represent Cupertino in our planning commission? Thank you. I think we have only one person left. Councilmember Frue, do you want to speak something?
I'll endeavor to be brief since we are already at 10:46. You know, I've just never before seen a public official threaten his critics' jobs for disagreeing with him. And so for me, Commissioner Wang's choice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong's choice, let's get his name correct, to do that in 2019 is more than enough to warrant removing him from the planning commission. It should have been more than enough at that point in time. And I think that the moral courage of council at the time failed them because they didn't do it, and they should have. It's a basic precept of democratic governance. In order for such governance to work, that people should be able to freely demand redress of grievances from their government, voice their views, and be able to do so without fear of retaliation or bullying from the officials who represent that government. If we can't all agree on that, then we don't have a democracy. It's really as simple as this. If you want more evidence, I've spent considerable time putting together a memo, a documentary memo for council. You'll find it at PDF page 82 of the agenda packet for tonight. It is many, many pages long. It documents everything that I can reasonably find that's easy so that I don't have to go into enormous minutia. But there is more than enough there for anything that, that, that might concern you about what you have heard today. At the end of the day, I think you simply need to believe the people who are here telling their actual stories of what their experience has been. It is possible to be friends with somebody who does bad things. That can happen. And I think that that is what has happened here for a number of people, unfortunately. If we can't make this decision today because we're overly concerned with process or because we're concerned about the politics of the issue, then the bar for ethics in this city is on the floor. It's really as simple as that. Let's raise it. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to request extra time because I was attacked by two fellow council members. I believe I deserve time to respond.
I do believe that you have a minute left. Okay, would you like to take your one minute? Because I am not going to have, I reset five minutes.
First of all, the letter by Ms. Faust, although I sympathize, but it is one-sided narrative, and the court has determined that matter, settled that matter. He is not guilty. Repeating that 20 years later, based on one-sided narrative again, is against decency. And when we appointed Ray Wong, this event was brought up. It's something happened 20 years ago. Do you expect the city council to hold someone who didn't actually get committed guilty of anything except this misdemeanor? We should not appoint someone because of this thing happened 20 years ago? And I think we should believe that people, especially it happened during a political fight. If I had seen something happen to my computer, I wouldn't suspected Councilmember Frue, for example. I would have thought, okay, something wrong with my computer. How did that, this thing happen? I wouldn't have filed a lawsuit against Councilmember Frue because he is my political enemy. He must have done it. But who knows who have done it? No one knows. No one can prove it. And now 20 years later, it's still brought up to attack him. And then now, I am being attacked because I did not take that into consideration and we appointed Ray Wong. Please stop. Stop this defamation based on one-sided narrative, not, did not stand up under cross-examination.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, so I will take my two minutes because I didn't finish it either. I just want to say very, very briefly. If you read the letter that Ms. Faust sent us, you will know what happened. I want to say one more sentence. I believe in Cupertino. It is future for democracy and for ethical leadership. We need to honor the intelligence and character of our good residents who deserve, deserve good governance. I'm voting on this on good governance and good character. So that is the last thing I would say, and I do believe anyone has some minutes. It's not, I think you've used your five minutes.
I finished early, Mayor.
Enter 10 a vote if no one has.
I have another comment because I didn't finish. No, I still had time. I read quickly, if I may, make a short comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I believe we need to have a time limit on, on the process so that we are not having items which are 20 years old. We don't, we haven't had a legal opinion on them. We're having Councilmember Frue and mentioned something that happened in, in 2019, and that's being brought up now, four years later. And because we don't have a knowable training and removal process, I still, I request the council agendize a policy process for admonition, probation, censorship, and the removal of commissioners, and also provide some process for council. I'm very concerned that we're going to be watching a subjective process happen again with the council members with regards to censorship. We don't have a policy there. We need to have steps in process, and I'm concerned, like I said before, for our commissioners who are volunteering their time, effort, and energy, that we're sending the message that this council is vengeful. We need a policy.
I think you're the only one who has maybe a couple of minutes, Councilmember.
We are sending the message that council demands accountability. This isn't vengeance. People who represent the public interest in this position or as a commissioner have at minimum a duty to uphold basic fundamental freedoms. And that is what Commissioner Wong has failed to do. That is what council failed to do in not removing him in 2019. It is what it failed to do again when it reappointed him.
Hey, so we, I think we all have our five minutes. May I, actually, I will take the responsibility to make a motion to remove Commissioner Wong from the planning commission. May I have a second, please?
Second.
It's being moved and seconded, and I would like to have a light vote, vote by light, please.
Pardon, I have a substitute motion.
Oh, okay. Before we vote, let's have a substitute motion by Councilmember Moore.
I move that we agendize a policy process for admonition, probation, censorship, and the removal for commissioners, and also provide some process for council so that we are not relying on subjective views and have steps in a process.
May, Mayor, have a second?
A second. So we will consider the, any removal after we have a policy, you mean?
Is that a friendly amendment?
Just like the bench policy, we should have policy first before we make any.
Would you like to make a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Accepted.
Okay, so we have a, a motion, a second, and a friendly amendment that's be accepted. So, any discussions? And if not?
I am open to establishing a process. We do not need that process for this matter. This behavior is beyond egregious.
Okay, so let's have some order, please. And let's vote by light on the substitute motion.
The substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so we are going to vote on the original motion that made by me and then seconded by Councilmember Frue. Okay, and unless there's another substitute motion? So let's vote by light.
The main motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Okay, so now we have a decision to make. It's almost 11 o'clock. The council's pleasure, do we want to continue to number 12 so that we can finish it probably in 40 minutes? Is that a good time? So may I have a motion to extend the meeting to 11:40?
I'm so moved.
May I have a second? We have a move second, let's vote by light, please.
So we just need Councilmember Chow and the mayor, yes.
We didn't, we pushed too fast.
The motion carries with Moore voting no.
Okay, so we are going to continue. Do we need a little break? Okay, can we get a five minutes break? In the meeting, I want to thank staff for staying late and our residents who stayed late too. We'll go right into item number 12, which is, which is considered the fiscal year 2023-2024 five-year plan for capital improvement program. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor Wei. We do have a very abbreviated presentation, and thank you, council, for allowing us to go and do a presentation to you tonight. So the, and also thank for all of the council members who took the opportunity to meet with staff to understand the project, to understand and also expedite the process. So what we have presented for you today is the list of the CIP proposed for next year, and we'll be here to take any questions and most importantly, your feedback on the list of projects so that we can come back with a proposed budget during the budget season. So with further, without further ado, I have Susan Michael and also Chat Mosley from Public Works to give you the presentation. Thank you.
Is it on? It's on now? Thank you. Good evening, council. I am going to breeze through this, so bear with me. Susan Michael, I am the CIP manager. Tonight's action is to receive the presentation and provide input. The synopsis is that, and maybe I just have to show one slide, but we have 27 active CIP projects, and we have 10 funded projects that are waiting in the queue. We'll come back and explain queue later, but we're only asking to add a few new projects this year. It's a modest proposal. We'd like to make a priority to finish the mini projects that we have already, and we're also trying to be fiscally responsible in, in light of the tax audit that's underway, and we'd like to have that resolved before we commit the city to additional large projects. And we do have a bit of a staffing shortage, so there are some good reasons for us being conservative in our request. So as part of the staffing shortage, we are asking also to add project managers for the division, and that will be part of the proposal that will come for the budget, with part of the budget later. So that's the short version. This was the original agenda. We're going to jump straight to the projects if we can. I wanted to just give a short view here of how we prioritize and rank the projects. We do give our highest priority to the projects that are necessary to protect the public health and safety. We do take feedback, comments, and suggestions from the community council and commissions. There are projects that are subsequent phases of current projects, and it's logical to continue those projects, so that has a little bit of a priority. One of the biggest resources, sorry, one of the, sorry, one of the biggest things that we do is consult the master plans and the general plan that does have stated goals and policies and even projects. So that often comes into play when we're looking to direct the CIP. And there are, the last one being the fiscally responsible, this includes being responsible with our resources, including our staff, and we don't want it to overcommit to projects that we can't activate. So if you wish to read further about that, there were two attachments in the packet on this topic. Attachment C is the list of the staff's prioritizations and rankings, and it includes the list of unfunded projects that goes back to 2019, 2020. And also D, attachment D is the extract from as many master plans as we could pull together. So there's good information in there as a starting point. And so I will quickly run through the projects. So the first project worth mentioning is the Stevens Creek Boulevard Calabasas Creek Storm Drain Repair. It's near the intersection of Finch and Stevens Creek Boulevard. The pipe in this location, storm drain pipe, has rusted out and needs to be replaced. The photo here is from the Caltrans Biennial Bridge Inspection where the corrosion was identified. The next project is extending the fiber, extending the fiber optic to the new City Hall Annex Project, and it's been identified in the fiber optic master plan as one of seven projects that have been proposed. We are proposing to do this one this year because of the adjacency with the other project that's underway. The third is, we'd like to get started on the Ballinger, Ballinger Road Bike Improvements. The study was done in 2020. It came up with two options. It's to do bike improvements along the way of Ballinger. It will require collaboration. It will require collaboration with the City of San Jose, so we believe that the initial stages of the project, the design, will take a while, it'll take a couple of years. So we propose to get started on it this year and doing traffic analysis and preliminary design. The next project is Civic Center Micro Grid. We applied for a grant two years ago. We being the Sustainability, the Emergency Operations Center Division and CIP, applied for hazardous mitigation grant program funding. And we got word last month that we were successful, which is crazy. And so we're throwing this in there. It's an exciting project to add solar panels at Civic Center as well as battery backup so that we're more resilient in the case of an emergency, but also that we can find a way to work that into our day-to-day use of electricity, lessening our dependence. So we need to achieve 60% design in the first year, so that's why the funding's broken up, and that's reflected in the federal funding that we're receiving. The next one is the extension of this, this is a long name here, San Tomas Aquino, the Saratoga Creek Trail. So we shortly call it the Saratoga Creek Trail. It's out by Lawrence Mitty. We're extending that trail right now to Lawrence Mitty. We can't extend it further because it's beyond the confines of the city. So we're proposing this feasibility study to reach out to the other jurisdictions that are going to have a say and a part in extending that trail. So we want to see what's possible. So that, you can see it's along the City of Santa Clara, San Jose, County of Santa Clara, Caltrans, and the Valley Water District. And the last new project is the Stevens Creek Bridge Repair. This is also part of the, we've received federal funding to work on repair of six of our bridges as one of our current CIP projects. We were advised to break this out separately because the repairs were substantial enough to warrant it. That funding has come through this year. So we're looking to do scour countermeasures to the bridge, which basically means keeping, doing countermeasures to keep the water from eroding the supports of the bridge. And I also included two slides on current projects that we're requesting additional funding for. And of course, the first one here is City Hall. As you know, the council directed staff to include it in the CIP. We are putting it in here as a placeholder. We will be coming back to council with further developments about program and scope and options. That was the direction. So we are asking for a million dollars additional this year in order to hire consultants to fully look at the options. And then the next project, existing project that we're looking to expand on is the Building Condition Assessment Improvements. In 2018, we had a report done, Comprehensive Facility Condition and Use Assessment Report that identifies the, what needs to be the state of our facilities, all of our buildings. And from that, we've been doing some projects as well as we're also updating that report. So we do see a number of projects that we are falling behind on, and we'd like to make that a priority. There's, for example, a number of alarm systems that need to be replaced. This is life safety alarms in the building, so five different buildings. And the locker rooms at the sports center are sadly in need of repair. So we propose 2 million this year, 2 million next year, and 1 million in the years following that. You can see that when we get to the table. This is two pages. The first one is the proposed project, new project spending. The first, the blue column has the six new projects that we're proposing at the top, which total about 1.3 million. The five-year plan is included after, in the next columns, we've included some escalation as well. But you can see that for some of the other projects, we're putting some of the larger projects in the years to come. We're trying to spread that out and make it something that it's achievable. And I won't go into details. Golf course, for example, we know that we aren't ready to make that a project, so next year we hope that'll be a project. Of course, Carmen Road Bridge is something that, there's a lot of people who want us to move that forward. We believe we'll be ready to start that, not next year, but the year after. We understand it's a priority, but that is what we're proposing in terms of the current projects we have underway. And on the additional project funding for existing projects, there's, the projects that I mentioned, there's the four multi-year projects that we've already, we usually approve, ADA improvements, streetlights installations, park amenities, and the playground replacements. So we're asking to continue those. There are two projects we know, we believe very strongly that we will have a need for additional funding. We just don't have the amounts of that. City Hall Annex, as we've previously discussed, and Regnat Road Improvements. We also mentioned this last year, but it's been stuck in environmental permitting this time, so we don't have more information at this time. I also want to just mention Memorial Park. We will be completing the specific design in this calendar year. And we believe that in the future years, more projects will come out of that, and that would be a significant effort. So we have $50 million with our projects that are already funded. We're asking to add six new projects and requesting additional funding for some others to a total approximately $5 million of additional funding for the CIP this year. The five-year plan includes significant projects, and we're trying to approach those in a reasonable, responsible way. And as mentioned previously, CIP is short-staffed. We're looking to fill a vacant position, but we're also requesting to add two project managers as well as some other positions that will come up in the operation budget. But one of the important ones to add is I need a project manager to address the City Hall project. And the next steps are to come back to council. And if we need to have another meeting to have, to address feedback, we can do that, or it's possible that we could be coming back in May to accept the proposal. So we'll see how it goes tonight. Thank you for your time. Hopefully.
Thank you, Susan. So in light of time, can I combine council question and comment right after public comment? Okay, so I'd like to open the public comment right now. Is that okay with council? Okay, I got three notes. Okay, so let's open the public comment first.
Yes, Mayor, so I have two speaker cards in Community Hall, and I see a couple of people on Zoom, so please have your hands raised on Zoom in the next nine minutes. Our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. First of all, let's start out with the Steve Jobs Trail, which is along 280. I name it. We need to name something after Steve Jobs. He was one of the greatest people in this city. He is deceased, and I think it is an honor to his family and to Apple. I want to know, I would like to know the status of this. I have spent many hours going to meetings. It runs from the two Apple campuses, and I hope that it will move forward. The other thing is, too, the $150,000 that's being spent to try to connect the Lawrence Mitty Park to Stevens Creek Boulevard. I sure hope that no money that has been put aside from Apple. If people are not familiar, there was an acre of land that was purchased and dated as a park when Apple purchased the HP property along Tantow. That ran with the land, and therefore, that's why we have money to put in a park in the eastern part of Cupertino. I really hope that none of that money is being spent to try to extend that trail across Stevens Creek Boulevard. I have been assured that it isn't being used. That money is meant for park infrastructure. We are park deficit on the east side. And I want to make sure that that money is not being spent to try to extend the trail to Stevens Creek Boulevard. Yes, it's nice to have something like that, but that is not the intent of what that money was for. This has been a 10-15-year battle, and the east side expects to have a park there. Now, if the city wants to spend $150,000 trying to find out if it's feasible with Santa Clara, Water District, City of San Jose, et cetera, multiple entities, remember, Lawrence Expressway is going, that whole interchange is going to be redone at some point. I've lived there since 1985. It's going to be an uphill battle. Yeah, that's fine. You may be able to get some money from the county, because the first time I heard of that trail, which was probably 30 years ago, it was the fifth reach of the Saratoga Creek Trail. So please proceed along, but please make sure that our park money is spent on the park. There are people who like to sit on benches in the park. As my husband had said, because he's been over there before, he walks around. Bicyclists can ride legally on Lawrence Expressway. They can also ride on the side where Mitty is and be completely safe. There is a nice crosswalk that goes across the eastern side of the 280 on-ramp, and they can get down to Stevens Creek Boulevard. So go for it. Find out what you want to do, et cetera, et cetera. But please do not use any of our Apple park money to try to purchase land down there. It's going to be.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time.
A nightmare, but please leave our park alone. Thank you.
Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren.
Good evening, Mayor Way. Vice Mayor Moen, councilmember staff. I want to thank Susan Michaels for the always good presentation and for considering the staff shortage and the tax audit for finances. I am very concerned with the 82-plus billion-dollar plan for the City Hall. Also, in conjunction with the Civic Center Micro Grid, if you're going to overhaul that, how does that play a part? If you're going to put that in first, then are you going to throw it away? Also, this 82 million plus, you're talking five years plus out, and the safety of the employees, we're overdue for an earthquake, a big one. And you're putting this out when you could renovate and make them safe. I don't care. I don't want to compete. I never wanted to outdo the Joneses. What we want is safety, usability, and cost. And some of that $82 million could go for affordable housing. It could go for homeless. It could go for a lot of things. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker is Lisa Warren in Community Hall.
Okay, thank you. So first off, thank you, staff. Thank you, Susan. As always, awesome. Same comment, I swear, I don't know how I always end up thinking, I'm going to say the same thing she's saying. I would like to add to it, though. Oh, cred, what was I going to add? I got time to think. I, the Joneses thing, because I brought that up last time, and then it was actually Councilmember Fruin that chose to name it that. And that's, I suppose, pretty accurate. But for a group of people that are represented by some of the people on the dais, who are so concerned about housing for all and don't feel that this city will measure up, or whatever it is that they are feeling, it's really sort of a confusing thing to hear the enthusiasm for keeping up with the Joneses, or whatever it is, to build more than we need, in my opinion, when that money, which I would not vote for it, can tell you that right now, in a bond, would not happen. That money could be used to actually purchase property and build city-owned low-income housing. Far better use, far better. And there's another point, but I'm going to skip it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And that concludes blue speaker cards in Community Hall. Next, we will move to Zoom. So we have three hands raised from San Ar, Sean Hughes, and Janet Ben Zorin. Welcome, San.
Thank you, City Council. I would like to request you to prioritize the bridge repair for McLealand Road and Stevens Creek Boulevard. If you read the narratives on the CIP on these two projects, both those bridges are past their design life. The McLealand Road Bridge was built in 1924, and there are serious concerns about its structure. That road is heavily traversed by people in the Modern Vista neighborhood, as well as residents west of the Modern Vista neighborhood. It is a path to three to four of our schools, and we have a number of families that use the path to get kids to and from school. It is extremely concerning that city staff have identified structural concerns with both bridges, since those are the only two paths that connect west Cupertino with the rest of Cupertino. I urge City Council to please prioritize structural repair of the bridges on McLealand Road and Stevens Creek Boulevard ahead of other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And next, we have Sean Hughes, followed by Janet Ben Zorin. Welcome, Sean.
Thanks for the chance to comment. I'll try to be brief. I was just going to comment in support for the microgrid funding, because I think, as the presenter mentioned, it's rare to get federal funds for such a project, especially for microgrids, which really aren't viewed in nice lights by usually larger utility companies. And I think that leads to the second point. I did hear some comments around, like, oh, why don't we prioritize some of this funding for housing? And I think, I think the council would probably be open to that, but my understanding is that these are not mutually exclusive, or they are mutually exclusive kind of like conversations. So I mean, if council does want to briefly comment on that, that like, you know, if, for instance, the microgrid funding that you present wouldn't be able to go to anything else, and even if you did, you'd be losing out on that much larger federal match. So I think that's like a really unfair kind of framing, and pretty dishonest framing. I mean, it's not a, is this money going to housing, or is this money going to the capital improvements? I think it's just, are we going to consider the things on the sheet for capital improvements? And then separately, if you want to consider money for housing, I mean, I would definitely support those ideas. So I don't know that the two are in competition, but if council wants to briefly clarify that, they can. Obviously, I think in general, right, like, everything could be in competition, but I think that's like a really kind of weird framing there, and I definitely don't support that. So, but again, for adoption of this and definitely for adoption for the microgrid funding, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. And our final speaker is Janet Ben Zorin. Welcome, Janet.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I've lost track of how the city's work plan is being developed this year, so I don't know if this is appropriate here or not. But I would just like to ask that the small parcels of surplus land that the city owns remain on the work plan so that if proposals come along to repurpose those, any of those properties in a way that Cupertino is favorable to, that those projects not be delayed, but rather be able to proceed in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And Mayor, that is all of the speakers that we have.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Okay, so I'm bringing back to council for questions as well as comments for five minutes each. Actually, CEO attorney, maybe I need to ask for extension again to midnight? Because five minutes, you just said 25 minutes already.
Yeah, you have roughly 10 minutes left.
Yeah, so may I do a support to extend it to midnight? Yeah, so may I do a support to extend it to midnight? Do we have a motion to extend it?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Let's move a second. Let's vote by light. Oh, did I not vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So, five minutes each. Who would like to start? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. So, these are just questions. It's question time, right? Okay, so I looked, looking at the budget, and I think I mentioned this earlier this evening, we have a twenty-million-dollar park dedication, social revenue-
A point of clarification. You can stop the clock if you like. I think that what the mayor wanted to do was to do both combined question and comment time. So, I didn't, I didn't want you to misspend the time.
Okay, thank you. May I continue? So, we have a twenty-million-dollar park dedication fee, and when I look at the funding sources for parks-related activities, the funding sources I'm seeing are coming out of the general fund. And I'm wondering, you know, you can answer this offline, if I could have some information about the theory behind that, because it looks like you can use the park dedication fee to fund some of these things. And if you have the twenty million dollars there, that, that might be a good idea. So, if I could understand that from a budgetary standpoint, I would like to. With regards to the, the money for the City Hall, so the, the request, originally, we were going to have the twenty-seven million dollars allocated for a renovation and bring it up to a Tier IV seismic level. But now, it, it's, it's confusing because there was a request to look at a, up to an eighty thousand square foot. So, we're at twenty-four thousand right now. Look at up to eighty thousand square foot new City Hall with a 500-seat event center. And I don't think that this, the amount that we're showing here in the budget is going to cover it. I think that that, with, with the parking that you're going to need around it, is going to be just around a hundred million dollars. And does that seem fairly reasonable for a guess for that? Okay, okay, I'm going to assume that's a yes. Okay. All right, so I just wanted to have that, that put out there. Lastly, I, I didn't see, and that doesn't mean it's not there, but I didn't see the Blackberry Farm Pool and Restroom, the ADA item. And I don't know if that's, if that did get in there somewhere. It is. Okay, got it. Okay, so, and was there a total? Because I think, I believe where the status is that we're waiting for it to come back to council, and one part of it can be done now, and another part's going to be postponed a little bit. Is that right?
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. The pools project does need to come back to council. We need to put it back out to bid, and we haven't done that yet.
And it's, it's just the pool portion, and we're going to look at the ADA-
It should be two separate bid packages. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's in, on page two of Attachment A.
Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to make sure that that was still in the works. And that is it for my questions. Thank you for all of the information and adding in the plan set that, that corresponds to it. I would like, perhaps, for the public, because we're going to be looking at this again, if there, and I, maybe it's in there, but a glossary for the, for the funding source and approved plan abbreviations. I think that might help people looking at it, just at-
It's the top of, top of Attachment A.
The attachment. Okay, good. Well, I knew what they were, but I didn't think everyone would. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have any council members who like to ask questions or speak up? If not, I would ask a couple of questions. Are there any projects that, that we can make it ready to go and apply for grants? Do we, do we know which projects are more likely to get grants? I would like, you know, see if that, that could be top priority so that we can have a ready-to-go project, and when the grants opportunities come up, we can apply for one. For example, I think Carmen Bridge, if we had it engineered, might have chances to getting some grants. That, I just might, I just pick one. Do staff have recommendations for that? Possible grant, you know, project-ready grant project that we can maybe prioritize this a little bit so that it's ready to go and waiting for funding from outside?
Yeah, thank you for the-
That would be my recommendation.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Yeah, a lot of these projects, as we move them forward, we'll look for grant opportunities. We do understand shovel-ready projects typically are a little more likely to get grant funds, but we do look for grant funds throughout the project.
Wonderful, thank you. And then there are three smaller projects for Blackberry Farm, Boshibo Shade, Linda Vista Park, Picnic Shade, and Portor Park Picnic Area Shade Structures, each about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I really think that, if that could be done for the residents to enjoy, I would really like to have those move forward as fast as they could because those things would be ready project that the residents can really take advantage of, especially the summer is coming up really fast. So, that's my comment so far. Councilmember Fruin, or, I assume, go ahead.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions. Just to use the example of the Carmen Road Bridge. Are you putting it off to twenty-five, twenty-six, or you're proposing to put it off to twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal years because you don't have staff and funding, or?
It's being pushed off due to a lot, other large project initiatives that we're working on at the moment. If you look here, you'll see that we are anticipating Blackberry Farm Golf Course improvements next year. We also are working on the City Hall projects and working on McClellan Road Bridge. There's just a lot of big projects coming up. Those, we believe, have higher priorities based on certain efforts. Carmen Road Bridge was pushed out because that's when we felt we had the staffing resources to really tackle that project. If that were to move forward, we would have to move other projects back potentially.
Okay, and the fifty million dollars is, is, if we did all the, is that the aggregate of all the projects that are listed here? You said there was fifty million that you needed for the CIP.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Moen, those, the fifty million dollars is already appropriated to the CIP. When these projects, when the CIP is approved, it's a separate fund, so the, the money is held in that fund.
So, it's red, it's available?
It is available. We are using it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Member Fruin?
Yeah, just one quick question and then a couple of short comments. Spoke about the Carmen Road Bridge a moment ago. What projects do you think you would have to deprioritize in order to kick it up to like medium level?
I might have to get back to you because it's going to depend on which contracts are already in place.
Got it.
So, I might answer one way now, just move this one and that one, but we'd have to respect that we're already engaged in contracts.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I don't, don't mean to make you put a puzzle back together.
And for me to interrupt briefly, this is, we're taking this input tonight so that we can look at these potential options as, and bring that back to council in the future.
Sure, sure. Yeah, the, the other is just a comment. There was some questions about like, what about funding for city-owned affordable housing? The cities in the past that have generally speaking gotten into this sort of work, like San Francisco, discovered that they're not any good at it and got out of it. And part of the reason for that is the existence of Article 34. You have to have a, a public vote on a low-income housing project that's owned by a municipality. Tends to rather get in the way. There might be some interesting partnership we can work on with, with the State Assembly member, Alex Lee, and his social housing bill, but I don't know how we would do it on our own here.
Councilmember Moore?
And I have one question regarding the capital improvement policy. And we, I believe we ran into this last year regarding the, the ranking process of the, the CIP. And you are going to have an objective process for evaluating CIP projects with respect to the overall needs of the city will be established through a priority ranking of CIP projects. The ranking of projects will be used to allocate resources to ensure priority projects are completed effectively and efficiently. So, is this ranked? And I think it was actually council that did the ranking last time. I have a recollection of, of doing that. And we even looked at some of the projects which were in process. So, what, what's the plan this year for that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Moore. We have, we have done our prioritization and ranking. We included that as one of the attachments, and we're hoping that is sufficient. We are open to input.
Okay, and which, is, are they numbered? Because I'm looking like at Attachment A.
We thought it was more appropriate to go with high, medium, low priority rather than a numbered ranking that reflected the reality of the, the way we're looking at the projects.
Okay.
Through the mayor, if I may. So, the ranking is a little misleading, but if we would, we would love an opportunity to do high, medium, low, as Susan mentioned, as opposed to a numeric order. So, that provides additional flexibility for staff to implement the projects as we see fit.
And so, this is the session for us to put input?
Yes, this is where we will love feedback. So, Councilmember Moore, if you, there are projects that you will love to see moving further along than others. We will love to take those feedback.
Okay.
Through the mayor, please point me to the, that, that ranking. I know I've, I've skimmed through it. I've, I've seen it. I saw the H, the high, medium, and low, but could you point to which attachment it is? Because I'm scrolling through the entire packet.
If I may, through the mayor, it's Attachment C.
I need a PDF page. I'm looking at the whole packet.
Okay, so, what Councilmember Moore is looking at, I have a question. So, the input that I would like to see the staff take a look at, but it's kind of a new input. I just thought about it. You know, our Blackberry Farm Golf Course, I know it's a big project. Is there any looking into if we can rent it to a golf place? They would renovate it on their own? We just get pure rent? Is that something in the horizon that staff can look into it? Just, just an option? Instead of our doing it ourselves, we're spending all the money and, you know, getting staff to run it? I, I just think personally, I think our, our city is not doing the business of running golf courses. I've been to a lot of golf courses that city run. They're really not as efficient. So, just a recommend, a suggestion, not anything, you know, just have we thought about it?
I think with the recent publicity that's come from the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, the city has been approached by a company that does just that. And I have a meeting set up with them next week to kind of understand what their proposal is. But it sounds like it would be something where they would lease the land, provide golf services, and the city would receive benefits by having a golf course that's operated, yet we would receive lease payments. Again, that's just based on a quick phone call, and I'm having a meeting with them shortly to discuss that further.
Thank you. So, you'll update us on that?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm looking, looking at the priority ranking list, and I, I'm sorry that I did not consider that we were going to have the option to move some of the, some of these things around. Okay, so, well, the, the one I wanted to see was this, the park amenity improvements. And I'm hoping to address some of the DOLA requests that we've had for the benches and all.
If I, if I may, thank you. Thank you. In my shortened presentation, I didn't go into that, but that was one of the things I was going to mention. We did prioritize, we did, we do have a project to install new park amenities at various parks. We worked with the Parks and Rec Commission and Parks and Rec staff to come up with the plan to prioritize what's going to go where, how many of what. That was done a couple of years ago. Parks and Rec Commission pointed out that that happened before the DOLAs were a thing and suggested that we work together again to add in a DOLA set of amenities. And we all liked that idea, and we were going to update that project to include that.
Right, thank you.
Any more questions? Input for the staff?
Hi. So, I remember that the city received a grant for the I-280 Wolf Interchange Project, which needs to be expanded. We received partial funding, but then the city still needs to put in about like twenty-five million dollars. Is that anywhere?
We can provide additional information on that. We've received a lot of Measure B funds, and I believe SB 1 funds to go towards that project. VTA is actually currently looking to put that project out to bid shortly. So, I can provide additional information to council via memo in the near future. I don't have all the details of that right now, though.
But the city, I remember, is still liable for about twenty-five million dollars.
Again, I can provide additional information on that, but I believe you've received grant funds that covers the city's portion.
Oh, I, last time, I remember the grant fund didn't cover some, but there's still a remaining twenty-five million we need to cover.
Again, I can provide information on that later.
Yeah, I just want to get a fuller picture of how many future projects we have. And then the, for the Fiber Master Expansion, I remember the staff submitted a Fiber Master Plan to the Assembly Evan Low to request funding for about some million dollars, maybe like five million dollars. Is, I don't exactly know the detail. Is that still something we are planning to do in the future? And the current proposal of three twenty thousand is just phase one of that master plan.
So, that master plan had a number of fiber expansion projects in it. We did apply for a grant. We did not receive grant funds for that at the time. This is step one. I think there's a number of projects that IT is looking to engage with, something like seven of them that we, if you look at the five-year plan, you'll see a couple of those in, in future years. We can continue to look for grant funds for all these projects, but you will see some of that expansion, some of that fiber expansion in now years.
Oh, so those are not listed in like Attachment A. They are listed in the five-year plan. Attachment B, I think.
They're listed in the five-year plan. If you look, they're, they are in page one. They're in the orange color.
Attachment A.
And it is worth noting that we're doing the first project because of the adjacency with the City Hall Annex Project. The plan is that those are good projects to go for grant funding, so that would be a priority.
So, and then on page two of Attachment A, the existing project, there are quite a few TBD, like the 280 Trail. We know that. We have feasibility study. And this is likely a costly project. And so, any estimate on the cost to finish that? And I remember there is also a, the Railroad Trail, Pacific Railway Trail, and that's not listed here. So, is that still something in the future where?
I can talk briefly about the UPRR Trail. We did reach out to UPRR a couple of years ago. They had absolutely no interest in a trail on their property. Doesn't mean we can't reach out to them again. At this point in time, we're kind of in a waiting game, trying to see what happens with Lehigh. That could have, that could have an effect on future discussions with the rail. That is not in this plan because it's kind of been shut down for the moment until something changes. And Susan can talk about-
The I-280, I remember, it's, it'll be quite costly, and likely we could reach out to Apple again for funding because it's connecting their two campuses. So, is there any plan to do that?
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. The I-280 Trail project is underway. The east and the central segments are in design. And I wanted to clarify, you're seeing on page two of Attachment A, the TBD in the column is in the remaining funds. So, we tried to show in the initial columns the amount of funding that has been approved on the project, and that fourth column with the TBD- And that fourth column with the TBDs is the, showing how much funding has, is remaining for that project. The TBD is because when that, back when the bike transportation plan was approved, there was a bike plan implementation project that was funded. And all of those projects are coming out of that fund. In the accounting, to sort out, to answer that question has to be done by hand because of that, so it just didn't happen.
I remember in 2019, I think we received about nine million dollars funding from Apple to fund quite a few bike path projects. The 280 Trail is part of that, but they only funded the study, not the construction. So I'm curious, now that, will we reach out to them to get additional funding for construction?
We have, I believe, one eight point eight million dollars of funding for that project over three phases. And we do meet with Apple regularly to talk about the dispersment of that funding, to make sure it's appropriate, and they are aware of upcoming projects.
Councilmember Chow, I think we need to wrap up, so get other people can, other councilmembers have time to ask questions.
Okay, another project that's TBD is the Memorial Park. So we, do I have any estimate how much, at least a range of how much it might cost?
Not at the moment, we're working on trying to finalize conceptual plans, and from there, we'll be able to try and get some cost estimates. So that's tracking with the Memorial Park specific plan, which we're, like I said, we're working on currently. We're hoping to have some information in the not-too-distant future, but nothing at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow, so we have about less than ten minutes to go. Do we have enough input that you can come back with a proposal next time?
Council, City Manager Wu?
Through the mayor, I think we have enough feedback received from council. Question is, does council feel comfortable with staff coming back as part of the proposed budget to include all the feedback that we have heard tonight? And go ahead and include a budget for you during the budget season.
Okay, I like the new process because I have never seen such a complete CIP plan. In the two years I was in council, this is my third year, and almost every plan is listed and has a initial budget and has the timeline and has high or median or low. And I did, would like to move those three shades from low to high, median, so that was my input. And I'm comfortable, I am comfortable with council staff coming back with a revised priority so that we can look at it. That's my personal opinion, so every council can input for a minute, see what you think. Yes, yes, please.
Sorry, first I keep forgetting, I expressed this to the staff already. This is the most complete information on CIP, thank you, the staff. I have been asking for all the list of potential plan, plans from the different master plan. And then you pull that all together in one of the attachment. And I have been asking for ranking every year. This is the first year, the ranking is provided with detailed rationale, as, so that then we understand how the staff derive those rankings. That makes me feel more comfortable, so, and then the five-year plan, that's also something I think every year the staff is improving. Before, it's like five-year plan from Attachment A, but now you actually have another, the real five-year plan in Attachment B. So yeah, I agree, this is the most complete, but it's discomplete because we kept asking for more information every year. And the staff has complied with adding more information, improve it every year. So thank you so much, this is, I, I expressed that in our prep meeting already, but yeah, thank you. I think I'm okay with going ahead with this, thank you.
Input from Councilmember and Vice Mayor?
I support the idea of bringing it back at budget time with updated numbers. We'll discuss it as part of the budget.
Only one more input out of putting, hopefully we have some BlackBerry Farm options to consider, that would be great, thank you. If not, that's okay, because something might not work out. Councilmember Fulim?
Yeah, the last part for me is just to thank you for setting up the prep session before, it made everything much easier, and I think it made this a lot more efficient.
If this is good enough for the staff to go forward?
Thank you, Mayor Ray.
All right, great, so I'm glad we done this very efficiently. This is, we have five minutes, do we have any items, we could go really fast in five minutes? Next item would be council reports and comments, I'm sorry.
We would need a motion to further extend the, the meeting because we've, we've completed the item that was.
Pardon, through the mayor, we have a consent item which was dropped, item three, I believe?
We, we do have one, but we only extended, unless we want to go another.
Yeah, at my end, my, the clerk can confirm this, but my understanding is the motion was limited to the item we just heard.
To number twelve, yes. So does the council has, want to complete the one consent item, number three, that report is agenda, it should be really fast, right? So is ten minutes enough, Councilmember Moore? So I need a motion?
If we limit it to that, then I will happily move.
Okay. Okay, we have, move a second, let's vote by light really fast. Oh, sorry. All right, now we're going back to Councilmember. Three, which Councilmember Moore pulled, so I'll let you start, and then we can have public comment. Is the considered approval of February 21 city council minutes? And should I ask if we have public comments first?
We do, mayor, we have one speaker card from Peggy Griffin.
All right, can we take public comment first? All right, let's go with the public comments.
And let me just check Zoom, if you have your hand, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this item, if you're on Zoom. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening again, council and staff. My comment on the minutes for February 21st is under informational items. Everywhere else that you skipped the item completely, it says was not heard by council. But on the informational items that just poof disappeared, it doesn't say that, it says information went to council. But when somebody is doing research on minutes for a thing, if you don't say that, also for all these informational items, it appears as if you presented it and the public heard it, but the public didn't hear it, it just disappeared. So what I'm asking is that for informational items, you put was not heard by council, information passed to council. And if, also, for the benefit of people attending a new meeting, and they think that they're going to hear some kind of presentation, somewhere under informational items where you have stuff in italics, if it could tell the public that this will not even be discussed, mentioned, presented, so that they know that this is all going to be skipped, and then the minutes could also show the same thing for each item, thank you.
Mayor Way, I have, I've located my page, okay, thank you. So I would like to show my, my agreement with the comments from Peggy Griffin. And personally, I would consider taking the adjournment line, where it says at 11:13, Mayor Way adjourned the regular city council meeting, because that actually happened after, or right before council reports and comments. Because that's why we did not hear those items, so that's, I would consider having that be the edit. I think this is, it's a little, it's unusual what happened, because the, the meeting actually got, was adjourned after item five was heard and we voted. So the meeting was adjourned there, and, and that's why there were, and you could consider saying council did not hear the following items, which would be correct. But I do think it's misleading because it says at the bottom, adjournment, and it's, and it's, it's like, why didn't council hear council report and comments? Or the manager report, or informational items, future agenda items, why did those not get heard? It is unclear, thank you, I don't know how to fix it, I'm sorry.
The manager, city attorney Jensen?
Yeah, so, so there is no hearing on the informational items, they're only, they're on the agenda just for, to provide council and the public updates on typically operational or administrative issues that, you know, really aren't, you know, either don't require often or not appropriate topics for council discussion. And so it wouldn't really make sense to say that council didn't hear them because, because there would be no hearing on them. We did have a request to bring an informational item back today for discussion, so that, that option's available to council to the, again, to the extent that it's something that's, you know, an appropriate topic for council discussion.
Pardon, through, through the mayor, I, I don't, I can, I can understand with informational items, with the description that you're using, that it would not say, that, that you would leave it like that. But with regards to council reports and comments and the manager report, and, and future agenda items, I don't see how those could simply be erased off of an agenda with no discussion at all. I, it didn't make any sense to me when it happened that everything just vanished after 11:13. Okay, thank you.
I do believe our manual have, have indicated we need to extend our time, and we have extended our time. So whenever we have to adjourn the meeting, that's when we adjourned, and whatever items under that is not being.
That is correct, Mayor Way.
Right.
And I, I, I can work with the clerk's office to make sure that that's as clear as it could possibly be on the, in, on the minutes going forward.
Okay, thank you. So now we have this item, we need to approve it, and do we have a motion to approve number three, the minutes for February 21st?
So moved?
And I'll second that. So it's being moved and seconded, let's have a light vote, please.
The motion carries with more voting no.
All right, thank you very much, I think City Attorney Jensen said she will work with our city clerk to kind of make it more clear, so next time it'll be, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you so much, so the meeting is adjourned.
Mayor Way, if I can?
Yes.
Indulge, be indulged by council?
Yes, yes, I totally forgot.
So Vice Mayor Mohan and I went to the Ichabana Flower Show last Saturday. It was such a well-populated and an attended event, so if I can have thirty seconds of council's time, or a video, can show the video for just the thirty seconds.
Absolutely, because I missed it.
Hopefully.
That should lift our, lift our spirit.
Video, I believe there's a music part of the video as well, thank you.
Well, thank you, City Manager Wu, that makes me very happy, and look at all the flowers.
Just want to share that the good pictures.
Beautiful artists, we're, now the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.